I think about.
Start now saying. But no.
Saber says.
Yeah. Sorry, I'll say for a stop.
Saber says.
And we have the newspaper. Journalists. That has a team. Like yes, that's what I'm saying. That's how I'll take.
Situation of how it might just.
They should.
So. So. Next year. This is. Do the ones out.
Yeah. He's logging. Yeah, I know.
Time and.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
All right, it's six thirty and I will call the September regular meeting of the Sartell Saint Stephen School Board to order. Thank you to all the community members that are attending in person as well as online. We appreciate your interest and engagement in our school district. And our first item is the religious.
I fly by the middle. To the eye of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, next item is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? Motion by Emily, second by Jen. On favor, say aye. Aye. Be opposed, say nay. All right, agenda is proved unanimously. And then the third item on the agenda is the recognition of visitors in public forum. We have one speaker tonight and that is Peter, please.
Thank you.
I will keep time pretty ready here.
Appreciate it, thank you. Good evening, my name is Peter Wilson. Live in Sartell, Minnesota. I want to bring up first something I have continually brought up and you see the the sound on the horizon of the possible next COVID or baboon pox or whatever it's going to be sold as. And that is we need to look into what was done right or wrong. I feel almost everything was wrong, including masking. Being, all of this comes from different life experiences. I recently was sent by someone in an actuarial department, the increase of deaths due to in the younger age brackets, this up about three hundred percent. I can't remember what the magnitude of that likely happening was, whether it was three or four times magnitude or one in ten thousand years or whatever it was. But it, you know, it's, it, these are the consequences that we will bear or the children will bear if you do not look into what went on and why and and how it's being done. Speaking again on that, then I will be, last time I spoke with our our temporary superintendent about donating books, I have done that since the early eighties. I want to do that. I will pay for it or associates or buddies of mine will pay. And I want to make certain these are in the middle school and or the high school. Elementary, I'm not so certain, there may be other books, these are not my immediate focus. And we need to clean these up, the ones that are in there that shouldn't be in there, but none of these books have anything to do with child rape or or brutalization or anything else, these are politically oriented, so people can look at these and determine why things are happening. Once you do, you will find very little is, yeah, very little just comes up at a meeting and they do it. An example, I happen to bring some in, Fossil Future by Alex Epstein. Lost in Trans Nation, again, the concepts of how transgenderism came about. Again, some of these might be there, my assumption is if the other books are present, chances are the people who would have allowed promoted or put those books in that system would not be looking at some of these. Again, this is very important, again, a child's psychiatry psychiatrist guy out of madness. Another one is American Marxism by Mark Levin. There's another book he's that I will get probably next week or this week. The Democrats Hate America or something, again, those are all highly documented, highly footnoted with research and these are things that should be in the school system. I'm not saying you today bring up and mandate people read them, you make them available, there will always be some you'd look at. And if needed, I'd be glad to speak to any book groups or bring others. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next up is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Motion by Jen, second by Emily to approve the consent agenda, any questions?
I do have one. And it was more of an observation, I was looking at the the financial part, there's a lot of admitting library books. And so I was, and actually we happened to have this happen already this school year where we got a flyer to this place and I went online to see if I could find the title. What we checked out, do we have that available somewhere? Trish, I think you had brought up too that that would be nice. That's like, is this good? So everyone are asking.
Is it not in the app? I thought it was in the.
I don't find it on Skyward or the app and maybe I just don't know where to look, but then I was thinking, well.
Let me check with Kyle.
There's a lot of, maybe that would help. It solves that, that's all I have.
Good. Any comments, questions?
I'd just say thanks to the community, that was one of the largest months of donation for us. And on the school board, so once again, our community is very supportive. First of all, I appreciate that.
Absolutely, I noticed that as well, so thank you very much. All right, any other questions, comments on favor of approval of the incentive agenda, say aye. Aye. Be opposed, say nay. Right, that passes unanimously, which brings us to our report section and we will start with the Saber Star Report with Principal Cruz from my school.
Here are more than ever to the school boards, my honor to present September Saber Star, not only she worked in high school, but she works in the middle school and at Oak Ridge, so Christina Oskerson, who works with all of our students who are learning English, so already have a language and still are learning, I need to be with her, so she can do it from kindergarten through senior and she can do it in every single language. So she works to support all of our students in such great ways and certainly doesn't know all of those individual languages, but it's just a great support for all of our students. Some of the issues that came forward, talk about how she goes between three buildings, she works near each of these students at an individual basis, provides incredible support and never with a complaint. She always has thoughtful, relevant and fun activities for her students. She is an amazing person and teacher. Her ability to work with students with various needs is incredible. An outstanding ability to vary her approach to meet the needs of each of her students. And I went to one of her students who's worked with her for years and I said, Ms. Oskerson is our Saber Star and I said, would you like to give me a student's perspective on that? He was really excited to do that and and his words were after knowing her for several years, several years, I can say she's awesome. And you're not going to say that word several times, she's just awesome. She tries so hard to help all of us and helps us to be successful. She is so nice, so helpful and always make sure we are on task with what we need to do. She's funny, then he pauses and said, well, actually she tells jokes and you can tell that she really tried. And then he finished again by saying, but she is awesome, just awesome. And I wholeheartedly agree and so I present our September Saber Staff Star, Ms. Christina Oskerson.
I'm very humbled and honored to receive this, I know there's a lot of of my peers who are also very well deserving and I get to work with really amazing kids and get to learn about their cultures and language and get to work with really great principals in recent years too, were very supportive of the program and just want to say shout out to Jason for being very, very good advocate toward the program since they started here. Thanks for giving.
Congratulations, thank you. Um, next one, we have the school board student representative report.
Thank you, um, so we'll start off at Oak Ridge, the starting school year has been very busy for them, they have started teaching their students about being safe, respectful, engaged, which are of course three of the parts of being safer strong. Students are mastering school routines, building friendships in their learning communities and learning new skills each day. Teachers are learning more about their learners by reviewing false screening data to provide a support differentiated instruction. Lastly, they're super excited to celebrate homecoming. On Friday, they had a kickoff assembly and students have been given their fundraiser fun and raisers, two separate words, and folks that are working to, working towards a schoolwide pajama day celebration if they reach seventy percent participation. Each day of homecoming includes fun dress up themes and special classroom activities to celebrate what it means to be safer. At Pine Meadow, they've had an awesome start to the school year. The Saber Launch, which is their first day of school, was a great success, they introduced students and families to their newly named school neighborhoods. No more color wings as they have now been renamed Sunshine Lane, Brook Boulevard and Forest Trail. They continue this theme into our homecoming kickoff video on called There's No Place Like Home. You can check it out on the district Facebook page. These first few days of school have been filled with with building school and classroom community, learning routines and having fun with friends they haven't seen since last year. And they're of course super excited for homecoming week. At Riverview, our school year's also off to a great start, the first few days, they did a lot of building community within classroom and then going to what it means to be safer strong at Riverview. For homecoming week, they have PTO sponsored walkathon fundraiser which helps support all the school field trips and supply needs at Riverview. Students and staff love how they have coordinated dress up days with ORE and Pine Meadow and they're very excited to get a flow in the homecoming parade, which is Friday. At SMS, the school year was also off to a fantastic start, their Saber Sword Day was successful and allowed the sixth graders to get acclimated to the building schedules and their teachers will put the pressures sharing it, the two other grade levels of the building. Their open house was also successful and they had nearly everyone there at one point or another. And the energy in the school has been really upbeat, staff and students are feeling good about. This coming week is homecoming week, obviously, if you haven't picked up on that yet. SMS students will participate dress up days just like all the other schools and there's a pet fest on Friday morning, the support from high school, including team captains, the pet ban. And finally, at the high school, we're already in full swing with all of our classes and I just want to take a second, say that second chance breakfast is the greatest invention of all time. We get now that school breakfast and lunch are free, there's a new opportunity to get breakfast in between first and second blocks. If you can't make it to get the early one. And so a lot of students and Mr. Cruz can attest to that, have been using this as taking great advantage of it. And we think it's awesome. Student council has been working really hard on homecoming, the theme for the high school is Camp Sartell and our dress theme, dress up days are themed around. Monday, Monday was pajama day, Tuesday was color wars, so each grade like this is in different colors. Wednesday is candy versus clamping or just dress up versus dressed down, Thursday is Jersey Day and Friday is Saber Day. Right now, and the reason I'm dressed up is we have homecoming royalty and representative couples from the freshman, sophomore and junior classes as well as seven senior royalty couples at coordination at the pack at the high school right now, in there. Having that event and going, and then the carnival is on Wednesday for high school students. We can play games, visit booths, maybe either by the student council or a variety of local businesses with prizes donated from other local businesses. Pet Fest is on Friday and all the fall sports teams participate in a dance battle, so they each pick some music and dance battle. And then one of the classes wins and I believe get, or one of the teams wins and I believe gets dilly bars. And finally, they have homecoming royalty have a sleeping bag race, just another fun activity there. And finally, Friday, they have the homecoming parade at tailgate, the game. And then we have a regular black light homecoming dance Saturday night.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you, thanks very much, enjoy your evening. All right, the next report we have is the superintendent report. Superintendent, please. Well, as you can see from the enrollment, we were projected in August at about four hundred and twenty-six kids, we now see the white in their eyes, we have four hundred and ten sort of down, about. Sorry, four thousand, sixteen, four thousand, yeah, sixteen kids. So that's something that we look at and we had a very large outgoing senior class last year at a smaller incoming kindergarten year, I think that we should probably see a trend like that through the rest of the year based on that information. So there's something, so the, the school year got off to a great start, small reports, participation and all the activities like Saber Launch the sixth and ninth grade orientations went very well, transportation for schools went relatively smoothly. So we always have issues when it comes to the beginning of school year with buses being at time and so on and so forth. I was actually out at at Riverview for the kindergarten transfer, that probably took a lot longer on that first day than it did even today. Right, because kindergartners are like, where is the lion bus, where is the lion bus? But there were lots of adults out there helping kids to get acclimated, we did have a couple of buses in the wrong spot, but they took care of that, so needless to say, busing continues to improve daily and we're kind of off and running with regards to that regarding school lunches. You heard that the second chance breakfast in high school is is a big hit as as is some other things as well. So we did review our tax information, our two thousand twenty-four tax information, we, so what happens is Department of Education, they basically a seminar, right? It's online now, you can, you can do it directly, but and valuations for homes are usually there's a year lag, right? And so what happened is that the valuation here in Sartell went up roughly twenty percent in twenty-two thousand twenty-two. And what that means is that we ended up losing equalization dollars, roughly eight hundred thousand dollars, is that right Joe? Is that about right?
Uh, one point two overall, one point two.
Going right to the next, yeah, right, from one year to the next, and so, so that's just a reality and so uh, when this happens, our equalization dollars go down and the finance report later in the week and the meeting, I think you'll hear some more details about that. We are working on the Riverview project, we did release the email to all staff, all families, embedded in that email was a video. The video has since been hung on our, on our Facebook website and on the district website. We've also included updates to our website about the history of of the facilities going back to two thousand fifteen. Last week, we had four different articles in newspapers from the news leader to Adam, a. Thank you, KSI and W. And the sick club live, so we're trying to get the information out as much as possible, we have brochures, I didn't go to the Chamber of Commerce last week and distributed some brochures as well. So with that, we do have a podcast coming out this Friday. The feature is Jesse and Joe and myself talking about the project and hopefully that will also be informational, we created the podcast simply because and that could be wrong, right, so but I, it takes me about twenty minutes to get from here over Costco when I run into lights and so on, so we wanted the podcast to be about twenty minutes of commute time, so that people can consume it. We should be publishing podcasts two to three times a month. We have a couple in the pipeline with Bruce Thompson, he's taken some kids to some leadership training through Minnesota State High School League and so we'll get out there, we'll put the microphone and try and let the kids talk about that and so the whole purpose, as you know, the podcast is to both inform the community about good things that are happening. I mean, things that are happening and be informative like the Riverview project, but also kind of be promotional. Tell the story because there are a lot of really good things to tell about what's happening at Sartell Saint Stephen schools. With that, we have the board receiving some questions and so I asked the board, has you received them, to forward them to me, I want to ask a couple of I'll ask and answer a couple of questions that have come in for the public consumption real quickly. Was the nineteen eighty-five edition part of Riverview project needs to be replaced? Well, whatever can be salvaged will be is the answer, however, what was added was ductwork and and some additional air handling units. However, they were meant to be something that could work on the old system, so they're all pneumatic in nature and so they are also thirty-seven year old years old, so there's a, or thirty-eight years old, sorry, so there's a good chance that we will salvage what we can, but there may not be a lot to salvage there given the fact that that it was built to be compatible with the nineteen sixty-nine system. Are there less complaints from staff in nineteen eighty-five rooms, actually probably not because those rooms don't have operable windows, so if it gets really hot or in the winter and or really cold well, not, or in the summer, they can't open the windows where the rest of the building can, so it's actually probably some more complaints from that area. And so why is this coming up as urgent power with the question, haven't heard of it before? Well, it was addressed in two thousand and fifteen master facilities plan, where over a hundred and sixty million dollars of items were listed. But it got put into phase two when the community survey was done. And so it's been out there, it has been communicated. We can think of how effective the communication has been, but there are some ongoing discussions about about this and how to address it, so. Question three, or next question, have we looked at the solar geothermal? Well, solar would help us with our electricity and geothermal might help us with heating the building. But none of those address the issues of moving air in the, in the building, so if we were to look at solar and or geothermal, that would might represent an additional cost, not reducing costs. So then, have we looked into energy grants? Yes, there are grants available, but I thought as of now, there's not a project. We can't apply for a grant until there's an actual project to apply for, so once if, if the board so chooses to move forward with this, we are aware of the multiple grants and we could look, we would look more thoroughly into this. Could the district take out a capital loan instead? Yes, we could, we have an option that the board has seen already, that basically would have zero impact on our taxpayer. However, the term of that loan is longer, the interest rates are higher and the total cost, it's almost double what it would be something else, in addition to that, in order for us to pay that, we would have to take money out of the general fund. Which means if we take a million dollars out of the general fund, we have to reduce our expenditures of the general fund by a billion dollars. And quite honestly, that means cutting programs for kids, so that's the, that's the answer for that one. Why, why was it not brought to a board for a vote in May of twenty-one when you had the estimate, it was an estimate, not a bid, in May of nineteen, of two thousand twenty-one? Well, the original plan was meant to prioritize projects for the next ten to fifteen years to determine how to use remaining bond funds. Not sure why it wasn't brought to the board except COVID was a goose, and COVID took everything down. Normal operations of schools almost ceased early because we're so worried about trying to get an education done in a very tough environment, so I don't know exactly what the answer to that is. But I, but at that time, long-term facilities maintenance was a relatively new thing in the middle of COVID and not a whole lot of places that use it at that point. However, I'm not even sure how, where we've worked out of it as a, as a potential option to be granted. Why were, why were we not budgeting for it since two thousand sixteen? Same answer as before, because if we budget for it, that means we're taking money out of the general fund. So if we budget a million dollars a year for sixteen years, right, first of all, it's going to be more than sixty million dollars over sixteen years. But that's a million dollars a year for sixteen years that we're not using in our general fund. So roughly a million dollars a year would be ten to twelve teachers. Right, so that's one of the reasons why we, we know it's been there, we, we had a plan to get to it. But we didn't want to take it out of our general fund and again, remember this, there's an old axiom in superintendent world and that is for people to understand, lots of people don't understand the difference between a capital bond levy and an operating levy, so I just want to remind the act of the axiom, bonds are for buildings. Capital is for students or instruction, no, sorry, not capital. Operating, that's. See, I can. Operate, operating levies are for work, right, so bonds are for buildings, levies are for work, right? And so that's the difference and so hopefully that does that, so is it just about students and staff being hot, lots of schools don't have AC. Well, it is definitely about being hot, but it's also about indoor air quality and we also heard on that video how that system is no longer dependable and delivering even amounts of heat in the building, so if the three of us are in three separate rooms all next to each other, your room is hot, your room was hot, my room was cold, right? And so we have a hard time with that older system trying to balance all of these in that building, even in the winter time.
It also helps extend the lighting of the building.
Correct, and, and so I know that teachers ask, well, gee, if it's going to be that expensive, why don't we just build a new building? Didn't they build, just build a new building, I can't remember if it was Stock Rapids, yeah, for like thirty-eight million dollars. Well, one, that building doesn't house a thousand students. Two, that building was probably financed a couple of years ago if it's completed already, which means it was, it was done on a fine on construction cost from a couple of years ago and financial cost from a couple of years ago. And three, we estimate that it could cost close to a hundred million dollars to duplicate a building of that size. And the third part is that the building of that, the build, all, all the indications that that building has good bones. Right, and so it could last us a long time if we take care, right? And so in part, take care, it would be the replacement of that. Have we gotten a second opinion? Okay. The scope of this project was developed by the facilities committee in conjunction with the architects, engineers and the construction management company. Our engineers also got a second opinion from ICS and whom they worked on similar projects throughout the state. The final cost would be determined through actually a competitive bidding process, so we have an estimate now. But that estimate has to go once, if the board votes, here's the problem. The board votes, let's just say theoretically, and it's just theoretical. The board votes in October and says, we approve, let's move forward, so then what happens is the design, the engineers start going into a design phase and saying, okay, what, what are the parts that we're going to need, how's it going to work, that design thing takes roughly, we months, right? And so then concurrently, the district goes out and works with our financial advisors to sell box. One of the reasons why October is considered an ideal time versus November is because everyone anticipates the Fed to raise the interest rates by the end of the year, what that means exactly as far as time, we're not sure. But we would like to sell those bonds prior to that interest rate, like again, if possible, trying to help with the tax effect. In addition, the three months of, of design phase, so that would be November, December, January, that means we can get our, our, our documents out. So the construction companies can review them and then bid on them in a timely fashion so that we could be early on and for their scheduling for the summer two thousand twenty-five. If we, the longer we wait, the more their schedules fill up and the less competitive we anticipate their bids would be. Again, these are things that are anticipated based on previous experiences, these are not promised, right? I don't want anyone to say, well, you promised us it was going to be competitive if it comes in over, because if it comes in over, we only have X amount, that's when we start value engineering. And if you're familiar with that term, it's basically, we got to cut some stuff out, right? We got to use a cheaper piece over there or something like that, right? So that's what value engineering is, because we have to come in within our budget, correct? So the process ideally gets started in October, drop dead time is what we're told by our, by our consultants in November, right? So, so then last but not least, how is this project different from the middle school? This project involves ducting, which is very intrusive, right? We have to take everything up, out, up to the deck so that we can replace things that and, 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 and the middle school projects that are still on our list are more plug and play. Secondly, we cannot, though, the plug and play middle school projects are not eligible for this tool, which would be long-term facilities maintenance, health and safety projects, right? So it was, it's just plug and play, so that air, air handler goes out, we. So it was just it's just plug and play. So that air air handler goes out, we replace that, right? And so on and so on. So that's how it's different from the middle school. There are other questions, but um basically, that's that's my report. Uh I think I already talked about the podcast, yeah. They were taking over that space on how long I went. Out in the hallway before it.
Thank you.
Yeah, those are good. Those are good community questions, and I think they're good answers. So I appreciate you. Yeah, and we'll probably, I I did get um a question from one board member saying, could we post that process online? So. Sarah gets back a little later in the week, and so when she does that, we'll work it at. On the same day she gets back, we'll post that process and we'll start posting a question and answer thing. And so. If you get guys get questions, please forward them to us as I put in the last week's board update. If it's something regarding really how hard is it to live in that? Forward that to Zach and let Zach answer that, because he's way better qualified answer than I am. If it's, well, tell me more about this funding mechanism or the Joe, if it's just uh if it's technical, like, wow, what about this system versus taxes? Or that the Jesse, he's has all that information. Um and then last but not least, if it's just general and you're not sure where to send it.
Wanted to know if we can miss them again.
Send it to me. And and again, we'll we'll start adding the Q and A on the website, so people are aware.
Thanks very much. And next one is, no problem with the district finance report.
So uh now is the time of year where we are, well, first of all. Monthly financial report budget actual really posted on the agenda. Um mostly what we're concerned about at this point is checking how the making sure the general fund is tracking along like we'd expected uh through August. We're just first starting to get into kind of the first um future payroll of the year starting there. So um right now. Tracking along just as we expect to really general fund um and and overall doing. Um Tom and Shane and actually Ben hit on a couple of things I wanted to talk about, but um. Beginning of this, we're this time of the year, we're really working in three fiscal years. Uh working in last year's fiscal year because we've got our audit coming up. Uh we'll have an auditor in person here um all of next week. Uh working on that. They are planning on the time to get their. Uh review processes done and their presentation ready. They're planning on presenting the results of the audit on the November uh board meeting. Um so kind of working in last fiscal year still on on the audit piece, prepping for those uh for that process. Uh this fiscal year, obviously, we've got things going on um. Uh normal operations uh and whatnot. And then next fiscal year, um you can see we're first taking the first steps in that from a financial perspective. With the other agenda item that's later in approving the preliminary levy, um which will impact next year's budget. Um which I'll talk about in more detail when we get to that action item. Um but a couple of other things just from an operations standpoint is um transportation. Tom mentioned. It's always, it's always rocky for the first couple of weeks. I feel like the first couple of weeks went pretty smooth overall as far as our bus times went. And getting in through and trying to get them on time to every school. Um I know there were a couple of days where we had one or two buses lagging um. But route by route uh trobacs and our internal transportation folks have been uh working on eliminating some of those issues to try to get those more efficient, more consistent. Um day after day. Um the second chance um breakfast that Ben and Shane mentioned. Last year, we served just over a hundred kids a day, um maybe a hundred and fifty kids a day at the high school overall for breakfast. Um now, while I'm being free, we're up to over four hundred um recently. So. That's not just in the second chance. There's um you have more time to get it the first time around. But after a first um the first block or is it after I say um at the first break in the morning, they also have a second chance. So if you have. If you get there early enough to eat the first one, you're guaranteed to get through the line and get your breakfast and have time to eat it. Um if not, it's been a real tight window on getting to the the couple of stations that we have set up, you know, learning rings. Uh to try to get to between class. Um so students are finding out that, you know, if they want a guaranteed breakfast, they better get it early. But there is that second chance option that is still catching over a hundred kids per day, just on that piece of it. Um you can only get one breakfast. Second chance is just if you miss the first one. So we do have the document. We do have to document each kid that comes through and they only get one free breakfast and one free lunch per day. And we're only allowing that one time through the breakfast. They can't go get a paid breakfast the second time. If we want to get as many kids the opportunity to eat the first one. So we are making it to that at this point. Uh but otherwise, we I don't have data on our lunch numbers yet. Um be curious to see and then update you for the October meeting on how that's going, just. Um versus prior years. I know during uh twenty twenty-one and twenty and twenty-one, twenty-two, when. Lunches were last free, our participation was much, much, much higher than it was last year and we're anticipating that again. So we have staffed up to some extent to and. React to some of that and anticipate some of that. And in fact, we've also added, I think, another breakfast catcher river, maybe just due to the the demand we've seen there. So. We are um we are kind of reacting staffing wise to 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 how we um the the additional meals were seen there as well. Um any questions on the financial report? I'll be coming back again um talking about the proposed.
The only question we had, uh just remind me again, because no one's ever. He uh breakfast and lunch, that subsidy that we're getting from state federal, does that go down or go away next year? Do we have less than coming um from the state to subsidize that? Or is that just a one?
No, it wasn't a one-year thing. So basically, what the state legislature passed was funding the difference. Between what the federal, what the federal subsidy for free and reduced lunch kids is and what the subsidy for paid lunch kids is. So um as of now, that's permanently in legislative language. Um. So we still want to identify as many kids as as applying for free, reduced lunch, reduced lunch as possible, because it also qualifies us for. Um some other opportunities and qualifies families to get discounts and other things like activity fees and and whatnot. So that is still um. Uh you know, a priority. We do still encourage people to do that. We push push them towards that in several ways. Um but the state. The state basically is Virginia.
Right. Thank you, Joe. All right, next. Uh Chris, are you the one that's gonna do the continuing contract feature report first time?
I can do it. All right. So in years past, um before the law changed, the statute changed. Boards had to approve the granting of tenure to teachers. Now they get it uh upon completion of their third consecutive. Uh year and a school district, and so that acknowledgement has kind of gone away, and we wanted to bring that back. Right? Because it, you know, um gaining tenure is kind of a big deal. Um because they do go through a fairly rigorous evaluation process to do so. So. These are the staff uh that have obtained the continuing uh uh contract. Um experience and therefore tenure. So that would be Sadie Amundson, Melissa Brayden, Wendy Clark, Barbara Eaton. Uh Dylan Erickson, Tom Key, Julia Goman. Uh by the way, forgive me if I uh butcher your name. Um uh Melissa Anowski, Sadie Hanson, Jacob Hennings, uh Lori Holtus. Uh Emma Lautenbach, Riley Merritt, Amy Arrol, Hannah McKee. And Nelson. Oh, she got me. She got me. Hannah Nelson, uh Aaron Phillips, Jared, sorry, uh Leanne. Got work goes up, okay. Uh Trish Stein, Julie Tom, uh Elizabeth Trudell and Rachel Wester. So they have all read that status and continue to have that. This is probation.
Excellent.
Congratulations to everyone.
Yeah. Thank you for that. And finally, we have uh school board committee report. Any committee updates?
I don't really have a committee update, but I had done the Zoom all advocacy tour through the M S B A last week. So one of the things that they are asking for, and I guess what I want to ask all of us, is do we want to participate in. Um bringing forward or submitting a legislative resolution at the board slash district. Some examples were like the S R O thing and um. Was the big one that they touched about with that.
So is this, you said it's through M S B A?
Yeah.
Do they have holistic topics that they're looking for support on, or is that more?
Whatever. Any district has some sort of resolution of any of the legislative stuff that went through this year that they would want the M S B A to help advocate on. So.
Okay.
And that is also in the handout that is attached to our board cabinet.
So. Thank you. Um, yeah, I don't know. That's probably the.
Um I think it's due by the end of the.
Oh.
We had a discussion.
Deadline is September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Yep. Um, yeah, I suppose we could edit as session nine. And there are available copies of proposed resolutions to base for our outline. Okay, that we can download and take a look at it. Yes. Do that in discussion maybe after the review. Okay, all right. Any other committee reports?
Um I can go for senior convention. Um they're still gonna be hosting the sixth grade field trip on September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth and then inviting everybody from the community. They're really hoping for the parents of those sixth graders, but all are welcome to come and do a little um. Doing a little history of Sartell on September thirtieth from nine thirty to eleven thirty. It'll be, basically, their sixth graders are gonna go and they're gonna be stationed. And we're gonna learn about Sartell. Uh but then on Saturday, adults are welcome to come and the station will be probably a little bit smaller, a little bit quicker. Um. And then I had said that we, they wanted us to have a conversation on November night. They asked if we already filled that slot. Uh so uh they're asking for someone to come on January the month. Which might be better to give them a super inherited search in Dave Henley's.
At the same time as the M S B A conference. Will it just be one of like, I'll I'll go and. Well, I just want also if that's the time of the M S B A conferences. Kind of a nice conference too, too. Yeah, so.
So for the speaking. The relation, the legislative network uh and schools for equity in education, which is financial equity in education. Uh C meetings start, I believe, this Friday, maybe this Friday or next Friday. I know it's on.
Was it a Friday or a Monday?
This Friday, yes, Friday.
Okay.
Regional meeting this Friday, so um. We will be attending that, at least one representative from the board. Um. Negotiations continue. We're voting on the. Clerical, okay. So we vote tonight on the clerical contract, which means it must have been approved earlier today by the union. And negotiations continue with teachers. We have closed meeting tonight after regular session ends to discuss. My first strategy and give them update for the rest of the board. Don't really have anything else at this point. I feel like facilities hasn't been any mid, because we've been discussing facilities in the regular meetings. So we don't have any of those meetings on board. Amber.
Man, I had one thing from C.
Yeah.
So we received a C report from last week. C is uh schools for educational equity. But what they're really after is educational equity and funding. Uh and so um as you could see from what happened, as our evaluations went up, we lost. Um um dollars, considering it's on equalization dollars. And so. You know, there, they will be lobbying to change those equalization formulas on our behalf, because that will be part of our input to them. But one of the reports that they gave us was total revenue per pupil. Uh by district, and there are three hundred and twenty-eight districts according uh that were measured. And Sartell ranks three hundred and eighth, which means there are only twenty districts that receive less. Um dollars per pupil in the state of Minnesota than Sartell. That's what that is down here. Now, and given the fact that our high school was just recently voted uh identified by U S D S A report. As top five percent in the state of Minnesota and top five percent in the country, I'd say we're doing more with less.
I think that's really a testament to good job, our district office, specifically our business office does as well. We sure squeeze a lot out of the funding to get. Yeah, but but given the fact that you had mentioned C, I guess I forgot to mention it earlier. Yeah, no, thank you. Any other committee reports or updates?
Um not really. I mean, we didn't meet, but. I'm sure some people saw it, you know, for the curriculum instruction and assessment committee, which is how the world's best workforce committee, I think, has been renamed.
That's the name of the committee under statute, yeah.
Yes. Uh there was an email that went out to district families with a link for um. Community members and or parents who applied to join. So I don't know. But it didn't, the deadline passed.
I don't think so.
I think it's still open.
Yeah.
For anybody.
It just went out like last week, didn't it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I I don't think the deadlines, I don't think we're both. Let me see if I can find it.
Last week, I mean. End of the week prior. But anyways, quite the um for anybody that wants the opportunity, I think, so they they should receive that email if they are in district. Immediately. It was.
But yeah, um assuming it's still open, you're probably right that it is. Yeah, um look for the email if anybody has interest in sitting on the committee from the public. Uh I think I saw there was a comment, they especially need people from overage, parents of students at overage specifically.
And I totally, we had a two-thirds parent and community member, member.
Under the learning tab on the website at all or?
I don't know if the updated link is on there. The updated link will send over the email that I opened last year's.
I just clicked on the link and it's still letting.
Yeah.
Look at the form, I just, but I don't see a date to say how long it's open.
And is that, does that say um?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it doesn't look like, guys, there's an, I I looked on the forum, there's no deadline on there, and I'm not seeing a deadline on the email either.
Yeah.
Excellent. Um, yeah, I suppose if any folks can't find the link, um email either Cam or Dr. Rob. Sorry. Thank you. The other. Men's about committees. That is the end of our report section, then, uh onto the action item. First one. For usual is uh looking for a motion to approve the personnel on bus resolution.
I'm. Thanks.
All right. Motion by Jen, second by Emily. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. On favor, say aye. Aye. Be opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Uh next section item approval of the truth in taxation hearing date. Do I hear such a motion?
So. Second.
Motion by Tricia, second by Jen. Um discussion, if you'll just ask, Joe, give us a quick. Do you second background on this one?
Yep, this is just part of the uh overall annual levy approval process between the date, the last date for notices to be sent out from the county, which is November twenty-fourth. And uh December twenty-eighth is when our um. Uh certified levy is due to our county auditor. We are required to hold a public hearing. Um typically at the beginning or of a regular school board meeting. Um so this hearing date is set for, we typically started at six o'clock, seven, six thirty P M at the high school. Um for the same day as the regular meeting. Um so I believe the regular meeting is already scheduled for six P M that evening, and then this is just setting the fact that the truth and taxation hearing will occur at that.
Well, didn't we set it up that way so that we could just roll it and we don't have to have like a break?
Correct. There's no break is required in any part of the normal meeting. But it has to take place before the action item will actually.
Um any other questions, discussion? So we're looking for the truth in taxation hearings to be at the same time as our regular board meeting, same place in December. On favor, say aye. Aye. Be opposed, say nay. S is unanimously. Alright, next up, um, looking for a motion to approve the two thousand twenty three payable, two thousand twenty four proposed levy, so moved.
Again.
By Jason, second by Churchman. Great. If you're gonna give us a quick update on this one too, please.
Yeah, um, so I'll kind of run through the process, um, it's outlined in the, in the cover memo for this as well, but, um. Just wanna touch on this, uh, can do this annually, um, so. The September meeting is the first step in approving our, uh, local property tax levy that'll be. Paid or collected throughout calendar year two thousand twenty four. For school districts, um, this is given to us, uh, basically, um. There's a, there's a, uh, data entry period within the month of August where we have time to. Input our data, which is basically enrollment estimates for, uh, the current year for the next three or four years. And, um, and to verify that our debt service, the information that they have is correct, and also that any, um. Least levies that we have in place, that they have that most up to date information. Those are the major things we put in. And then, uh, the state has till September eighth. To come up with a preliminary calculation of that, and it's always released on that deadline date. And so, first Friday in September, and it's typically done before four thirty in the afternoon, uh, the state releases that. And it's, it's a thirty six page document with all the calculations, um, I think we're up to, I don't know, a little over three thousand calculations this year, um. Based on legislation, based on, um. Uh. Based on, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, um. Uh, equalizing factors that are set, that are set in legislation, um. A number of ours, of our, uh, tax levies have corresponding state aid that offsets those. So what a lot of this calculation is doing is saying, okay, what's your maximum levy for this category? And then what, uh, state aid are you eligible for based on the district's net tax capacity per pupil or other equalizing factors? That calculates how much we'll get in state aid, and that reduces the local property tax burden. Um, as, so that's, uh, that's what the initial process is in September, it takes them a couple weeks to get it right. So they're doing levy runs just about every day. Or, or districts won't have something completed yet, like they, maybe they didn't turn in the correct, uh, approval process for their LTFM plan, now rerunning that, or the, um. Uh, least levy information will be wrong, and they're making those corrections, so MDE is continuously rerunning these, uh. Levy calculations, sometimes they just do the calculations wrong for whatever the first time. So the equalizing calculations is when you look through them, combine errors, and then the state will rerun, um, everybody's, and let you know when things have changed. So because of that, typically boards approve maximum in September to allow for any changes that happen between whenever the board meeting is. And September thirtieth, and those, all the changes that are made are based on just reruns that MBE. Um, approving maximum basically allows us to say, okay, this is the maximum you can, you can levy in December. Um, it can only be reduced after, at that point, unless there is something like a, uh, unless you have a, uh, a vote that takes place in November. Uh, we don't have a vote taking place this year, so there won't be a, a referendum that can impact our tax levy. Districts that do have a referendum going on would approve maximum in September, and then that amount would actually increase after their vote is approved, if it's approved. Otherwise, it would stay whatever it was they do, whatever. Um, schools are a little bit different than other taxing authorities like cities and counties, uh, because. Our levy limits are told to us and calculated for us, and, and that's what we get. Based on things like voter approval levies, how much debt, what our principal and interest payments we better do the next year are, um. And what equalization we qualify for. Um, cities and counties basically set their budget, and then they take into effect, uh. Other revenue streams they have to offset those costs, and then they set their levy based on that. So you'll see a lot of headlines this time of year about this city or that county and how much they're approving for the levy, and it's really because their budget is driving that. Um, whereas for us, for schools, it's a little bit, it's, it's the opposite process, this is the first step, this is the first revenue that we know for next fiscal year. So what we're, what we're looking at approving for, um, for levy preliminarily now, and then the final levy would come through. In December, and that's always accompanied by the truth and taxation, um, hearing, which is a much more detailed presentation on what our different levy elements are, how much of each we're getting. What went up and down, what our tax base looks like, et cetera, um. Basically, that, that setting taxes that will be collected throughout calendar year twenty four and will be revenue for us in the twenty four, twenty five. Um, so that's kind of the process and the timeline, um, after we take this action, we have till, I have till September thirtieth to certify. What are, uh, that, that the board approved maximum in September, um. Then our counties will take that data and spread it, will take those, the, the levies from us, from the cities, from the counties. Um, and they'll spread that among every property taxpayer and show them what their proposed taxes are. For fiscal twenty four, and that's the notice you get in the mail. Uh, so they have, they have, uh, a two week window basically between November tenth and November twenty fourth to mail those, to get those notices to property tax holders. And along with that comes a treat and taxation notice, so on that, if you'll ever notice, it'll say the various meeting dates, um, that. That the, um, districts or cities and counties have to, to have their TNT. Uh, and then December eighteenth, we'll hold our truth and taxation meeting, and then December twenty eighth is the last day that I have to get all the final information to the calendar. Uh, so this year, uh, the, the first run, um. Is a little, is between an eight and nine percent increase at the time that the. Uh, to our gross levy, so at the time that, uh, this was run and, uh, the Board of General went out last Thursday. We were at an eight point three percent increase from, uh. Payable twenty three levy to payable twenty four in total, total dollars. And as of right, as of today, the last one that went out, it actually went up to eight point seven eight percent. So about a half percent difference, they had actually changed some of the equalizing factors, had a couple of the equalization. Calculations, uh, wrong, so. Uh, like I mentioned earlier, um, some things have an aid component to them, and some things are, are all levy. Um, our operating referendum has an aid component to it, um. Our equity revenue that's based on, um. You know, our, our approved operating referendum compared to most throughout the state that, uh, has a aid component to it, operating capital does. Long term facilities maintenance does, um, and, and so does our debt service, um, so all of those elements have a related. Aid component to them, and last year, um, actually for the calendar year two thousand twenty two. The net tax capacity, uh, of the district, which is really a product of the, is assessed market values, went up by twenty percent in Sartell State Stadium within our district. Uh, the statewide average is only four point three nine. But, um, but that went up by twenty percent, and you would have noticed that on your property taxes that you paid last year. Okay, there's a, there's a lag in when you pay, when, when you see that impact as a property tax owner. To then when it's calculated on our whole levy the next year. So, so be, because of that, um, a lot of these factors, a lot of these, um. Levies that I mentioned, and, and the biggest one being our debt service, uh, payments. Um, those are driven by our net tax capacity per student, and our net tax capacity went up significantly by about twenty percent, as I mentioned, so. Um, this increase that's proposed, or that's been calculated by MDE, see if I have the summary page here. Data today, um. Is an increase in total levy of about a million dollars, one million eighty seven thousand. Um, the related aid for those levies that are impacted is a decrease of one point two nine million dollars. So our resulting total revenue of all these sources will actually be a decrease of about two hundred thousand dollars. That's in levy and levy related aids, you will. Um, so. Uh, when you talk about, this doesn't impact our gen ed per student, or the special ed. Um, cross subsidy aid or things like that, those are separate aids that were part of the legislative session. That we get, you know, based on our student count, or based on our previous years, um, special ed cross subsidy. These are aids that are strictly related to offsetting our local levy. Um, and those, we're seeing a reduction of about one point three million, again impacting next year's budget. So, not a whole lot of budget impact overall, uh, because overall, really, our, our debt service. Payments for next year are going down. Um, but the amount of aid we get for them is, is also going down substantially, so that's the kind of biggest piece of this. So not a big budget impact one way or another, as far as setting this tax, property tax levy, but the increase is going on the levy side and on the inside.
At what point does it impact the budget overall?
Um, it impacts the budget signif- uh, more significantly if, um. You know, most of these are enrollment driven. So, uh, or resident pupil driven, really. So unless you have a major downturn in, in, um, resident pupils, I mean, if you see a major drop off there, you can see a major decrease in. Um, revenues, but overall, um, the, you know, the ones that are based on enrollment are, are, um, referendum. And our local optional, and the combined difference in dollars is about eighty thousand dollars total of a decrease for next year as compared to this year. Um. In terms of other total revenue, you know, long term facility maintenance is going up a little bit by about forty thousand dollars, because that's probably as, as our building age, it's, it gets a little older, we get a little more of that. Um, but it's more on the levy side than on the side, so not a significant revenue impact either way on these. Um. Where, yeah, but, but definitely a difference in where they.
Can I ask a question just to make sure I'm understanding?
Sure.
Um, so we. First of all, to be clear on what we're looking to approve tonight, it's using the language maximum, I think maximum, correct? Um, we, we do that instead of using a number, because the numbers from the state can change between now and the end of this month, correct? Okay, so that gives us the flexibility to change with those numbers rather than locking in now. And then maybe seeing a higher number later this week, which means either we miss it or we have to call special board meeting.
Right.
So, okay. I just wanted to make sure I had that clear, thank you.
And it can only go down? Is that what?
Yes.
When we lock in.
We get our maximum, we have to vote to the maximum and then come down, if it goes down, okay.
Yeah, so the only way it can come down is if we choose to under levy that way.
Okay.
So we can say, you know what, we don't need. We don't need our, uh, basic community and levy, let's just not levy that. That hundred and three thousand dollars or whatever, well, then we lose the aid that goes with it as well, um, so then we, you know. There's picking one that, uh, you know, community has to lose a hundred and seventy six thousand dollars of revenue, you're saying, oh, we're gonna save a hundred thousand dollars of money. So any, anything that has an aid component to it, if you choose to not, any one of these, if you choose to under levy it, you're choosing to basically pass up that revenue stream.
Oh, if you choose to under levy it at any amount, not like. At a hundred and three thousand dollars, if you say, okay, we're just not going to levy the hundred and three, what if you said we're not gonna levy fifty of it? Does that then change the state aid by the same amount?
It changes, yes, they recalculate that, they stop, yeah.
And you're saying that these, that this amount is what we were all paying. Last year.
Yeah, so, let me back up on that a little bit, so this, this levy calculation. That the state does that comes up with what our, what our, um. What our district's levy is for all these areas, that is determined by MDE based on last, based on the two thousand two.
Twenty two.
Twenty two, sorry, net tax capacities and referendum market values of all the total property value in the district, okay? Then. You know, they obviously are reassessing, then in two, in two thousand twenty three, you know, your, your property gets done. Assessed again, you get a notice and marches it, um, with what your new assessed value was, that's the change that you'll, you'll, uh. That's, that's the value you'll pay these taxes on in twenty four. And, but, you know, so most people saw the increase on their property tax statement last year when the, the twenty percent hit on average. Um, so that's what's calculating our local levy this year, but your own levy, your own. Individual property tax payment is gonna be based on what your property value does this year. And, um, I think the city used the terms, their, their, uh. The city's levy is going up by about nine point six percent, but so is their net tax capacity. So they're basically saying if your, your taxes are gonna go up about the same percentage that your. Uh, property tax value goes up, and that'll be the same for us essentially, because we're anticipating a nine to ten percent increase in the, uh, market value. That's relevant to the tax you'll pay on these, which is very similar to the close to nine percent increase that. It's confusing.
It is. What would that look like on a three, like if we're averaging the cost of a three hundred thousand dollar loan, do you know what the dollar amount? There's a lot of like, that get thrown around, whereas.
Um, if, if, if you're, let's say your value was three hundred thousand dollars last year, and it went up to, it went up by ten percent for this year. Um, it would go up by about ten percent, and so it would go up by about a hundred and sixty dollars. The last year's tax bill would have been about fourteen seven seven.
So, yeah.
And, so when you're looking at the very bottom line, which is the revenue we are bringing in from all sources, we will be down two hundred thousand compared to the last.
All sources that are related to the tax, thank you, yeah, that's, yes, okay, yep.
Alright, so even though the property. Tax levy from the school district goes up. The actual revenue from this, yeah, type of funding is slightly going.
And these are one of the areas where when the state talks about the surplus, this is a leg, okay, so. They, I, I don't know how much of this they budget into their initial forecast, but, um, when the equalizing factors don't go up. And just in our district, the state aid portion is going down by one point three million, so then when they do their projections here towards the end of. November, December, that one did the first ones, that's part of the. The, uh, surplus calculation of the C is less money that was spent to taxing authorities for their equalized. But they're unknown during the previous legislative session.
Is this like, I, I mean, I can't imagine this is uncommon, I haven't seen increases like this.
This is very uncommon, but most of the time our, um. Most of the time our, our, our referendum values or our property values or tax capacity goes up by about six to seven percent overall as a district. Um, this is definitely a catch up year, especially in Sterns County, uh, in their assessed jobs.
And in kind of layman's terms, so the, the state use, we got a hundred bucks, the state used to pay seventy, and the local property owner. Pay thirty, and now we're, we're gonna get ninety seven bucks, and now the local property owner is gonna pay thirty, forty seven.
I think it went from eighty twenty to seventy three twenty seven.
Right, yeah, so the bottom line is, we're not getting any more revenue. That's the trick. And that's why, like, organizations like C lobby for us to change the equalization formula, which haven't been changed for a while.
Yeah, because what if, I mean, in an event like this, that obviously is probably unsustainable, we won't see an increase like this. Again, uh, but what do you do in the event that it's, I mean, it's an astronomical amount, they only, they can have that big of a burden. That big, or a burden then, we council this, is there any funding that comes from anywhere to help equalize that? Outside of putting it on the taxpayers?
Oh, well, again, Scott, you and I had this conversation, Sartell. Start tell of what we refer to in my profession as a property poor district. Because it's ninety some odd percent dependent on residential property. You know, where my, the community I live in, Bloomington probably has the best mix of residential. Commercial, right? Because we have manufacturing plants there, we've got Donald, so we've got Toro, we've got others. But also, um, so, so that's industrial, uh, commercial, if you think of the strip. Um, living through all the hotels and the, and the restaurants and stuff like that. So. For Bloomington to raise something like twenty million dollars, it might impact that, uh, residential home or thirty bucks a year. Compared to here, it's gonna be a hundred. Because the mix of property just isn't quite, it's not. Uh, it's, it, it's all on residential.
But I suspect part of the answer to your question is there's a lot of long-term things that could happen to help, which would be increasing your tax base. You know, adding commercial industrial properties. Instead of actually pulling out.
So.
The residential side.
In a sense it goes.
Whoever uses, so you got people out of state coming here and use commercial. Uh, facilities, they're helping pay for it then too.
Right. So it's kind of like, it's kind of like we're professional athletes come to Minnesota, whatever games they play in Minnesota gets taxed by Minnesota. Cause that was income earned and so. So it's, so when people come from out state and they're using property.
Well, even the baseball players, the other teams have to get taxed.
Right, that's correct.
Playing the state.
I did attend the, um, at, at the chamber, the mayor gave the state of the city and he was talking about the redevelopment of the land. Um, up to where the mill burned down and that has some, some great potential for bringing in new commercial. Right? In addition to the one, uh, how does that work though?
Um, it's still part of our school, it's still part of our.
We have a little, we have this, our district lines are weird. Well, we have a little bump over in the.
Yep, yeah, you go over the bridge, you go, uh, north by a couple blocks, semi-west by a few blocks and that's within the circle.
So if we did develop over there. That could help, it could help that.
Well, the paper now, right now, impacted our district.
Oh, absolutely. And it's back to everyone.
So basically this levy is based off the new levies of the school system or the new school and all the running costs. Um, that's the debt service levy is based off of the.
Yeah, that's debt service portion.
Yep, and then the other. Uh, community service, general.
And the debt service goes down in this year.
Right, and not by much because we talked about what a total of a hundred and fifty mil. The debt service goes down, um. The debt service principal interest payments, um, going down with the levy actually. So if you look at the total column of this one. Uh, there's about a fifty, is it about a eighty thousand dollar difference? The, the total payment is lower this year, but the aid portion of it went from one point five million to about ninety dollars. Property tax portion of that actually.
I guess what I'm saying is if we're saying eight point three percent more on the levy portion of a hundred and fifty million. That equals, oh, twelve mil?
I don't know what the hundred and fifty is supposed to be.
Well, isn't, well, I'm talking about your debt service, I think, after a community service or general fund, but. When we raise eight point three percentage change, what total will we put in the format?
Seven point one million dollars, the debt service portion goes toward the debt service payments device. And then the total column to the right, where it's a seven point nine, that's the total, um, that's the total debt service portion. Because that includes the equalization.
It's compared to what, eight point one, the barrier, correct, total debt service. Any other questions or discussions?
I, just to make sure I'm fully understanding. So when they say we're adopting the maximum. That we're adopting the maximum, that's because we're not putting a number on it, right?
Correct.
But that can, we are not approving our number and that can reuse, it just can't go up.
Correct. It can't go beyond what the state calculates for our levy as.
And we could, so we can make.
But it can go up.
Oh.
Yeah, it can.
Eight point seven eight right now is what it's up to.
Yeah.
Did I hear that right?
Correct.
Could go up to ten and we would still lock in at that if that's the number of, of the thirty. Right, but that's not, I mean, by saying the maximum, that doesn't determine what we actually approve in.
Correct, correct.
And that's where the, it can only go down.
It only go down between the end of September and between the levy that it started by because there's no vote happening.
Any other questions or comments? We have now asked for, uh, votes to. Prove the twenty twenty-three payable twenty twenty-four proposed levy, uh, and adopt the next. Did you ever say aye?
Aye.
Can you post a name? Right, that's unanimously. Good show. Okay, next up is approval of a memorandum of understanding with the, um, multi-unit bargaining group. First, I'll ask for a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding. So, second, much my Emily, second by Jason. So for discussion, um, we're gonna put up Dave and Chris over.
Um, this is chairman's grievance filed on how we handle e-learning days with respect to our custodial staff. When the legislation changed, um, or when we implemented e-learning plan and we did not have any, um. Plans for it in the contract because we did not think we were gonna, we were going to be implementing one. Uh, in lieu of hearing that grievance to the board, we were able to settle it with the multi-use, uh, multi-unit group in this memorandum of understanding just always. Agreed to this downturn of the contract.
Any questions? Okay, any discussion? Great, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You post a name. That's unanimously, thanks Chris.
That you want me to do next?
Uh, yeah, please. So the next item, action item is. Approve the contract, uh, that was recently negotiated with the local two eighty-four representing the clerical employees. So first I'll ask for a motion to approve the contract. Watching by Tricia, second by Jason. Go ahead, Chris.
Uh, you will see that there is an attached summary of the tentative agreement. Um, the financials are right at the top there. Um, an average of two point six seven per year. This is a three-year contract, which is typical with our clerical bargaining group. Um, they are also represented by S I, S I, S E I U local two eighty-four. It's a little confusing. We were just previously talking about our multi-unit group, which is, um, custodial, uh, transportation and nutrition services. That's a fair call. They are two separate bargaining groups, but represented by the same statewide. So just for some clarification there. Um, and you can see, I mean, I, I won't go through this piece by piece, but on top is all of the financials. And then below is just the summary of the language changes. Um, I would say, uh, and Matt and Tommy were both there, but it was a very, um, legal. Negotiation session that went quickly, which is.
And I'm gonna give you the update earlier that the clerical unit did pass our tentative agreement. They did a, approved it earlier today, so this will be final. Any questions, any discussion? Right? All in favor then of, uh, proving the contract, say aye.
Aye.
Can you post a name? That's unanimously. Right, on to discussion. The first item of discussion is a second reading of. Policy is five sixteen point five and six twenty-one. Um, have to do with, on the one hand, overdose medication required now by statute between the buildings. And the other hand is another legislative change, um, that are seeing the red act. Assume no discussion, but I will ask for discussion. Right? Moving on. So the next item is discussion, uh, further discussion of the River View HVAC project and. Guess my intent for putting this on the agenda, but primary intent was to talk. About what our feelings are, our plans, what we think is necessary for getting the word out even more than it has already. To the public about this project, about funding mechanism, we're considering and that sort of thing. So, um. Guess we had this discussion to some degree, we, I don't know if we came to any sort of consensus, but we had that idea to turn around. On what we were looking to do as far as educating the public and by that, I mean, not just district families who have kids in schools because. Kind of, you know, that went out to everybody, the district residents as a whole, anybody who would be impacted because the stove's come with a taxing fact. So, um, I don't know. I think it was helpful personally to get a recap during a superintendent report of what efforts we've done so far. I wrote them down. Wow, I can just. Rehash what we've done and make sure I didn't miss anything. So like I said, we had the email blast go out to all. District parents of students, uh, that included a link to the video. Um, that Tom and his team put together, which is on our website. We have a website page. Dedicated to explain this project, um. That Tom said there, I think, at least four news outlets that have run articles, uh, online. Uh, we have torturers that have been created, uh, with kind of a bare bones information. That can be distributed and have been distributed in some cases and we have a podcast coming up this Friday that will be on the district website. Available to anybody, obviously, uh, personal, so. I guess I'd ask kind of the first question to everybody is what more do we need to do and when should it be done?
Well, I mean, you already got all these, you know, like we suggested, try to reach out to the public, but. What are we getting feedback? How, how can we quantify it? Can we put out a mock? Vote, put on some kind of web agents, you know, yes or no for it.
Like a poll?
A poll.
I think there is a poll on, uh, website already. On Facebook. Earlier today. Um, Marie, you remember what the name of that site was?
Concerning citizens.
Concerning citizens, uh.
Concerned parents and community, sorry.
Sorry.
Not of the district.
No.
I prefer to have it done by our school for, for the district here versus outside entity so we can. Yeah.
Yeah, and what, what is the question to you? That we asked.
Just, just, just asking, if you had to vote right now, it's election time. You had to vote for this and take on another, you know, huge debt. Would you be wanting to go through with it and be willing to suck it up again or not?
So to add to that, um, we received, the board received an email today, early afternoon and late morning, maybe. Um, asking where are we at with the stadium too? So if we are gonna pull the district as far as. Um, the HVAC project, uh, I did say that I would bring that stadium. To this conversation as well. And I think Jason, you had brought it up maybe a couple meetings ago where if we pull, do we pull saying? We want both, like the entire phase two done? Do we break it up? But that was one of the.
Was the stadium in face?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And we have the money set aside for it to get it done?
No, that would go to another. Base two, no, it wasn't, it's not done.
All right.
It had to go to another.
I don't know, man. Like I said, it's just amazing how we're. Asking the public to fund everything right now. It's just.
Well.
Either needs or wants, and I don't think that. We need to focus on what the needs are for some stadiums and all that stuff right now.
Right, but the original conversation, not to cut you off, I'm sorry, Jason, but the original conversation with this. Part in the planning and Jason, please correct me if I'm wrong. We have two projects in phase two. And so the question was, what is happening with the stadium? Do we bring it to the public? And actually, this particular individual did say that it should go to the public. All of it, the HVAC and the stadium.
And I'm not, I, I just wanna, my sister's husband, my sister's family owns a plumbing company. And this is kind of devil's advocate, kind of more on your question that when your heat goes out, you don't care what the price is. You're gonna pay that price, right? Like, cause I mean, nobody wants to live in Minnesota without heat. But it's, i- and if a plumber doesn't give you that bill for three months, when you finally get it, you're like, ah, this stinks, right? But, and it stinks, like I am hoping that nothing ever happens like that for River View. But I think for me, it's like, I mean, I think, I think you agree, like, if that heat goes out, I don't know what we're gonna do with those one thousand kids. So, I mean, yeah, we can pull the community, but like at the end of the day, like, we as a board are representing them and we need to make a decision. Whether it's going to a vote and doing the stadium and River View or, you know, whatever that may be. But, I mean, we, we are responsible to make that decision and make sure that that kind of event does not happen. And so, but we also have to remember, we were told, and it sounds like we've been told for years. That this isn't an emergency, we're not predicting a catastrophic event to happen. And even if we did approve it in October. We still have two years to come up with a plan B should a catastrophic event take place. So what is our plan B? And Tom, I know I had asked you that the other day and I'm not expecting you to have an answer right now. But we also have to have a plan B for the thousand students plus staff. So what is that gonna look like?
I agree, but that doesn't, that we, we still have to make the first decision.
Correct.
Of getting planning down and, and yeah, we have to have a back, we need a backup finally today, right? But my, my problem with polling, and it's not that I don't want to hear what the community thinks about it. If the community, if we go out and say, what would you vote today, yes or no? And overwhelmingly they say no, what do we do as a board? We just, we don't.
You listen.
We, so we don't fix it.
Well, you listen to the public because they're the ones who voted us into this position. And they're trusting that we are speaking on their behalf. That's why.
I understand. So we just say, we're not gonna fix stage back.
Well, then we come up with a different solution that's better for this project. Like I said, we have, we exhausted all the potential fixes for this.
Can I, can I ask something, Jason, with you being on board and Trish and Matt? Why didn't it come to the board for a vote in twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an answer for it because it, or why didn't it get brought up and, and made? Knowing it wasn't me, why didn't it get fixed in the original plan? When all the other schools got remodeled and, and all that was the original thing.
Well, I think we discussed that.
I don't, I don't, but what I, I, that's why it's frustrating, you know?
Okay, yeah, no, I understand it's frustrating, but I'm saying I don't know that we need to rehash the whole history.
No, and we, and I'm not gonna do this, and, and I'm not, but I'm just saying that that's.
I understand what hesitancy was in twenty twenty-one. Is it, is it the same hesitant?
I don't know that there was hesitancy. The only thing I could say is. Since what, the referendum was in twenty sixteen, the building bond. It was always looked at as a ten-year project. So I think when we got the update in twenty twenty-one, it was more in the tune of. Hey, this is on the horizon. It wasn't in the tune of, we're coming up on the eight to ten years right away. But now we're two years out from that and we are looking at a project that by all accounts is gonna be completed not until the. Fall of twenty twenty-six, which is ten years out now from. The last building fund. So now we're in that time, which we weren't in three years ago.
Well, and two years ago, was there a way to, to fund it for, yes.
There was.
I don't remember being told that we could do that for air quality though.
Right, but.
I don't think that was brought to my attention. I don't know, like, so.
You're also in the middle of a superintendent change. You were just on search, you're existing super. You're also in the middle of a superintendent change. You were just on search. Your existing superintendent was on its way out. Your new superintendent was on its way in. It looks to me like your attention was in other directions. Um, and like I said earlier, COVID was very disruptive.
But we're in that again, I mean. We're in a super search. We have an interim who will be going out, but all due respect, Tom, on that.
That's fine, but now it's September, it's not May.
Correct, but I'm just saying, like, there's, there's always gonna be something. And I don't necessarily think that polling the community is the right solution right now, I, but I. I do think that the community needs to have input and has to be able to to share their. Thoughts too, so.
I have a couple thoughts in that. Um, the first one is I tend to agree with Jason. On this issue, I don't think polling does us any good, because I think this is one of the. Things that we are voted in to make our own decisions on. If you're talking about, like Scott was differentiating me as first wants. I think polling is a great tool for the state. I mean, that, let's feel up the community because that's more on the want.
Hundred percent want.
A hundred percent, yeah. So in that, you wanna get a feel for the community sentiment, but. The community can't come back to us on a poll for the HVAC and say. River View doesn't beat an HVAC system. We've been told by the experts that it does, that we're in at the end of the life and that's. My my other thought is. Kind of the related arguments that that I keep hearing is, well, we've been told for so long. But this is on the horizon or it needs to be done. So what's different now? Well, what's different now is that we're further down that timeline. If we've been told for ten years that we need to do this, it's crunch time. It it doesn't mean we can keep pushing it out ten years, because to me, that means we need to do it sooner than later. So I think the time is now, especially with the economic conditions that we're looking at. I'm talking about forecasts of higher interest rates coming soon. We know construction costs go up year to year, whether there's inflation in the general economy or not, so.
Can you remind me though, what does it, we were told that there was a plateau. What was that plateau referring to? When it comes to the building, was that a plateau in pricing, was that a plateau in work?
Building costs were projected to really kind of keep skyrocketing.
So the labor might. So that, so what was said, what was that, um, there is, it's a, and what was clarified was. Construction, uh, inflation normally runs. Two to four points higher than general inflation. So when general inflation is sitting at three percent. Construction is gonna be anywhere from five to seven percent. However, when we went through a year of. Eight, nine percent inflation, construction inflation went up further to eleven, twelve percent. Uh, and so when you have two years of that in a row, which we did, that's why we see the almost twenty percent increase. From two thousand twenty one till now. I think it's fair to say that we're not in that environment anymore, but even a five percent increase in one year is another million dollars. And and so. And that's kind of a baseline increase. I mean, that's a, that's a baseline and increase in the, so that's what you would call plateau, that it's still rising.
It's still rising, but it's back to the normal rise.
That's back to the normal rise. The other thing is, and. And. Uh, so when we got the, um, estimates in the spring about tax impact. It assumes certain things. It assumed that the vote vote board would vote earlier, we'd be out to, uh, to. Sell bonds earlier and we would start construction in summer of two thousand twenty four. When the, when Baird realized that that is no longer true, they gave us a change in the, um. Tax implication and it actually went up. Right? So what was, I think, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, it was like a hundred and eight dollars on a three hundred thousand dollar home. On an annual basis, I believe it went up to like three forty eight, is that right? One, one forty, sorry. It went went off from one oh eight to one forty eight or something of that nature. It's pretty close. Yeah, the model went from something around nine dollars for something around eleven and a half. Yep, and those can be structured various ways and, um. If and when there's a resolution on the table to vote on a representative from Bear to be here to. Answer those questions more in depth as well, you know, to deal with these on a daily basis.
So when you said that this is, you know, we were hired to make these kinds of decisions, but this is not, this is new. This tool is new, the ability to vote this through without voter approval, without a referendum. This type of project is new. So this historically isn't a twenty million. Taxpayer burden isn't historically of just a board decision.
But when did this legislation? Fifteen and then board, I think boards, I think districts got the authority at sixty.
This is a rela- relatively new power that a board has. I think we need to be extremely careful with how we exercise that. Because in a community that already has had a history of trust and needing to rebuild that, I don't know. That sticking into the constituents on a twenty million dollar bill is gonna be like our. Best way to do it. No, I'm not saying that's not the only way we're eventually going to have to do it to get it done. But we certainly fold the community the time to make sure that we are doing this correctly. And we have rushed this. We heard about it for the first time in June. We spoke about it again in July and August second. As a board, those are the only times you ever talked about this ever. So we've had three discussions and we are supposed to make a twenty million dollar vote. That is not good for the community. That is not putting in the time. We need to be better than that. Even if we're gonna use this tool, we better use it wisely. That's not gonna do it.
I think that ignores a lot of the work that's been done in the district.
It doesn't ignore it, but that's.
We have. All kinds of. All kinds of work that's going on at the district office with our consultant. Since the high school got built, this has been on the radar and so it's been worked through with our construction management team. We've gotten estimates. Done all the behind the scenes work and we've gotten those updates on the work that's been done when we've had those. Speeches given to us at the.
From multiple construction managers.
Have we got different eyes in there other than one person or a group?
I just wanna know.
Do we have enough eyes that have come in there, look at the construction project? Because I'm in the real construction world, especially in the remodel world, you can have three or different people come in to bid that job. And all of a sudden, you, the people are wanting a certain deck or a main bearing wall knocked out. One general contractor is gonna go, I'm gonna do the go away price, twenty minute. Roll out now. Then you got the second contractor comes in, oh, I could do this for half the price and. You know, we could eliminate and and take care of things in a different manner, not to disrupt it or. There's, there's different eyes and different contractors that have different skills, just like having teachers. Uh, you can't just have one teacher create curriculum. You want all the teachers to plan and get an idea from each one of them to come up with the best plan. We need to get more eyes in there other than one specific general.
And they make the same.
So they can say, hey, you know what? That duck work, yup, it's old.
So number one, it has to be one specific general. It is a construction man- manager firm. Who represents the school district, um, and and the generals come in the bidding process. It's not, this is an estimate based on a facility's plan that was done in two thousand fifteen. And because of construction cost increase, nothing has changed as far as what the perception is around the need. Um, and so we have had input from ICS, with ICS. ICS is another construction management firm who does this work all the time, right? And so we have had some input from them as well. Um, and, uh, we, eh eh, and and. The the pro- the problem I'm having, I'm having with this conversation, to be quite honest, and that is. The assumption is that those of us in the school district who are tasked with responsibility of doing this. Are just not doing our due diligence and that's just not true.
I did not say that.
Well, but okay, and. When you say things like, we haven't gotten different eyes out, we needed, have we explained all different?
I haven't been told.
And I've told you that and I, and I, I know that this board has heard that. Okay, and it begins to look like a delay tactic so that we don't take a vote.
No, this, this is not a delay tack, okay? So let's get that straight right now, okay? What I am trying to do is get some different eyes to say, you know what, maybe we don't have to tear out all the damn duck work. Okay, maybe we can do it in a different way. Do we need a new motor or the blower fan? Okay, let's replace that. I know that you can go in there and instead of the pneumatic dampers, you probably could install electronic dampers. Okay, you cut a section out, put in the new technology. Do we really need to play, replace the entire duck work for the whole thing and do all the asbestos a pavement? That is the kind of eyes that I'm asking for. You got one specific person that's gotten this in his brain. Hey, if we're gonna do it, let's do the whole thing. So how about we do it in a way that we could actually maybe cut some costs?
I think we've been told though. Specifically with the duck work and the capacity it has, it's just not up to code. I don't think there can be a question about that.
But our houses are up to code that we build.
Let's get, the only. Brought up some good questions.
You guys have brought up great questions. Um, the engineer, design tree engineering that's looked at this the most has talked to also local subcontractors that would be interested in. In subcontractors, I say general contractors like McDowell Company, uh, Wyner Mechanical, contractors that have worked in this district for years. They've all been part of the process that is in question. So it's not just Bradbury Sam and Design Tree looking at this. It's all of you, local, in town, people who live in this district. Everybody's looking at it, because everybody wants the right thing. Um, the duck work is in question because of code compliance issues. Also, we're adding HVAC, that's a whole different. Ducking system that has to get happened. I'm not an engineer, unfortunately, I can't speak to that specifically. But that's some of the reasons why duck work and all that. Can can we replace some of the motors? The units are from nineteen sixty nine. The answer is simple, probably. Um, it's just, it's old, it's tired, it's done its job since nineteen sixty nine. It's, it's time to let it go rest. Yeah, it's a big, I get, I'm I'm a taxpayer in the district as well. I live in this district. Um, so I understand that it it needs to happen.
So a lot of things that I've heard is. Twenty million dollars. What are you spending twenty million dollars on? Like, people are shocked by the price itself and I don't. I don't know. I don't know HVAC, I don't know construction. But that seems to be the one thing that gets repeated all the time. What, why is it twenty million dollars?
Most of the work is behind the scenes, you'll never see, unfortunately. It's, it's a product, it's a product that entails mechanical systems. It's not gonna make the school more beautiful. Um, through that process, though, a lot of times ceilings all have to come down and get replaced. Um, so there are potential for ceilings to look nice, new lighting, that kind of stuff. Um, is all part of the project, but it's all equipment, duck work, control work. Piping.
But the lighting isn't eligible for the LTFM, correct?
No, I think he was, he was just. Saying most of it won't be visible, but the stuff that would be visible is if the lighting and up ceilings get up there.
It's feeling good though, it's not, but it has to come down to be.
It doesn't always have to. I'm just, it's just generally.
Ceiling is eligible because it has to be taken down to get to those systems. The lighting isn't because you could replace, like, you could take those lights down, put it back up in theory. And so that's, that's generally done through our own annual, you'll notice in the ten year plan we improved back in June. The lighting portions of that are set aside as to be replaced the next three or four years.
And once, if everything moves forward, once we're into it, it would be designed in a way to make sure we don't go outside the scope of things. It's that's a problem, that that's just part of the process, is making sure we stay within the kind of confines of.
Do we know where I'm saying about the square footage of that is? Because I have. You know, I have heard, um, well, we did a similar project in this school and it only costs fourteen million dollars. Why is it costing forty million? I don't remember the slot and 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 my answer to that is part of that is that if it's completed, like I said earlier. That was done on dollars that were done, you know, it's like, like here, if we had made the decision two years ago, but it's sixteen million. If someone made the decision three years ago, it was fifteen million or fourteen million. And so by the time it gets done, yes, that costs, then by the time this gets done, someone out there is gonna go. Hey, how come it's gonna cost us thirty million? It only costs our now twice, right? For a comparable size. The other thing is a comparable size square footage, right? So are we comparing apples to apples?
And scope of work in general, I mean. We've done in the last two years, a lot of dollars worth of these exact same projects in the same cloud district. We've done four schools in the last two years, just finished three this last summer. Um. And each one of those has a different dollar value, which actually only because of what was done with the project and what. With those units got upgraded or changed or maintenance, that kind of stuff through the process. So this is pretty much a complete, got it and it solves.
So you might not be able to answer this, but this kind of goes back to your question, like, so if I was going to. Put in a new furnace and all that stuff and a new house, what is rough, I mean, maybe you don't know that number, like, what would that roughly be? And could we put that maybe on our district website to say, like, okay, if you have a. This size house, this is how much it would cost for you to put in a furnace. And then if we can say, like, the square footage of River View, maybe that would put it into a better, like. Compared to. So my thing was, you said, well, I feel like there's codes, like when we say that it's not in code. There's probably things in my house that I built seven or eight years ago that might not pass code anymore. And so. Well, no, but you were saying the twenty million people say, oh, actually, Mike, like, if you say that this is how much it is to put in a new furnace, an HVAC system in my house today. And then I can compare my square footage to percent, like, I mean, I don't know, it just, to me, it like makes it seem.
It's under one hundred eighty four thousand.
Yeah.
According to the.
And new construction cost right now, you wouldn't believe what.
Oh.
What cost this for new construction on the score right now?
So could you give us?
Hundred the dollars more than we've spent on ice.
Could you give us a rest, a rough estimate? Cause that's another thing that has been brought up too, like, what would it cost to? To replace, like, to tear that building down and build it in the same spot? I am not advocating for that.
There's a lot of variables I go into that.
Sure.
But we've seen anywhere from. Three hundred and seventy five bucks a square foot right now, all the way up to five hundred bucks a square foot. For construction costs. At different parts of the country too, um, we've seen those, the construction costs are just, or new construction is pretty.
And that one, and that building, that won't even include the teardown.
Yeah, and and that building doesn't need to be torn down. We worked on that building. That building does not need to be torn down.
No, and I'm not saying it does. I'm just. What would it cost? Because some people are like, well, if it's gonna, I'm broad, so. If it costs twenty million dollars to put an HVAC system in, but really it's gonna cost thirty six million dollars to build a new building. Do we entertain that conversation a little bit more? And then to piggyback on that, like, how long are we foreseeing that we're going to be using for review? Are we going to use River View for the next fifty years, for the next hundred years? Well, then I feel like that is a different story as well. For a different part of the conversation, but.
I think the twenty million dollar question too, I like, I've gotten it from people who work in the construction field, commercial construction, so they're like, twenty million. For what? And when they say for what, and I don't know, I don't even know how my own furnace works, so.
It's, it's a tough pill to swallow when you're, I mean, it absolutely is, when you're spending twenty million dollars on things that you will never see.
But they're asking more specifically, like, isn't the air handlers, you know, like, what is it?
Air handlers, it's controls, EAVs, it's the computer system. That runs the whole thing, is electrical upgrades from nineteen sixty nine to make all that work. Um, it's. Duck work, it's, it's everything, but it's not void, not void, it's not void. So it's not the source, the key, right?
I do have another question, just cause I was looking at the. Um, breakdown, I think that was emailed out. Prior, and it says something about a pool unit. Does River View have a pool anymore?
I don't know.
So then.
I think at the time that initial order was done, it wasn't sure whether the pool was gonna exist or not, if I recall correctly.
So then my question would be, is it something that we would? Have a new estimate brought forward to make the adjustments for things that might not be there anymore?
Hey, so. Costs are gonna change throughout and really the bidding process bets that all out.
Okay.
So, you know, the design, the design process that would take place by, you know, is really a collaboration between the engineers and construction managers. And they go back and forth on what's the best. Equipment to use, what's the chiller to use, how we, you know, what's the best way to deliver these, best control systems and really inventorying. Equipment by equipment, what, what goes where, and that's part of the full design process, and then that's bid. So, you know, if bonds were issued for nineteen point six million dollars, let's say. And the total cost of everything that actually needs to end up being done as part of the scope of this project.
And the total cost of everything that actually needs to end up being done as part of the scope of this project. Ends up being seventeen point three, that whatever's remaining goes in the debt service fund. To pay down the, the issue dollars. So those types of things are. Discovered or vetted out, if you will, throughout that design and bidding process as well. Appreciate you gave the estimates per square foot to replace a building like that. I did the calculations. We said it was nine eighty-five thousand square foot facility. That's between seventy and ninety-two million dollars to replace that building.
But those are numbers that the community needs to hear to be able to swallow a twenty million dollar.
And there's a lot tangled into that, right? I mean, you do a bare bones, bare bones school, you might be able to get it down a little bit, but just general construction.
Kind of a nonstarter. As a realistic conversation, but sure, it's good to give the tool to compare.
And again, in no way was I. There are people in the community that percentages don't, percentages are hard to understand. Whereas, hey, it's gonna cost you ninety-two million dollars to build. That's anxiety.
We heard the same question from Stan. Sure, right, say, like, it's gonna cost twenty million. Why don't we just go, again, saw crap and just build something for like thirty-six, thirty-eight, or why couldn't we do that? Well, because the square footage is significantly smaller, because there, because if it's done now, it would fit out two years ago. Prior to the raise, the construction cost, except.
Right, and by time is also a different conversation. To build a new building like that is two years. Then that extends the problem.
Then you run into the issue of where you put it. Or what you do with kids in the meantime. So you could put on a football field. Go put it on the football field and build it there while you still have kids in the building and then.
Where we built on, you know, on an old playground and replaced the school and then demo the old building and it fills the playground in the summer. We've done a lot of that kind of.
Um, Tom, just to go back to what you said, you said it's, it seems like a stalling tactic when we're talking about having multiple estimates. I'm not at all looking at it that way. I'm just looking at the amount of. Just amazingly bad. And I have gotten in fact, since the news articles started coming out, it's like, I feel the lack of information that I have. And I wanna be able to confidently say, dude, what's it going to hurt at the end of the day? If the estimate is. Twenty million, give or take, no matter who's looking at it. Then it is. But it's the, it's the optics and the appearance of, have, like, have we slowed down and really done it? And and been able to stay with confidence that we've done all of those due diligence things. It's, I feel, I've felt a lot of pressure for the last three months on this project. It's only ramping up. Doesn't feel any better now. I don't feel any more informed. I feel like I just completely, I'm backwards daily on this. But it's stuff like that where it's like, well, what is that cost?
So we put out a, a new RFP, for example, for a new, um, construction act, but that's a sixty day note, that's a sixty day process. And so then potentially then, uh, and a lot of construction managers wouldn't even wanna bid it because there's no project to be bid. Right? As like, so, so, uh, then, then you're back down to limiting. I know that we had, uh, information from one who said, yep. This is, this needs to be done. We'd be more expensive than Bradbury Sam. Um, and so, uh, again. It, it may, but, but. We also have a longstanding history with Bradbury Sam. They know the buildings, they know the district, they have served the district well for years. Um, that is not to be taken lightly. You know, if we did that, maybe we could call Bradbury Sam and say, can you sharpen your pencil and make it a little bit better? Um, but, but in the end, it's like, I think we'll be in the same place. Um, uh, you know, three months down the road and we're not going to, we'll miss our window for, that we talked about for design things, or we'll miss our window. This, this has been identified for eight years. This is not new. What's changed is the amounts. Uh, and and that amount has gone up basically in conjunction with the amount of change in construction cost.
And everything you said about inflation and construction costs is hundred percent accurate.
Yep, can I make a distinction here? Because I've heard a couple of times the comment that we need new eyes in there to get a different estimate. I don't think a different estimate does anything for us. Somebody could come in and say this will cost ten million dollars.
I'm not talking about a different estimate.
Okay.
Okay, let's get that straight. Okay, I'm trying to do is find different eyes that might be able to come up with, instead of a total gut out. Is there the possibility of saving costs by retrofitting certain areas? That was my only thing that I wanted to throw out there. Have we exhausted that? Or we, or is everybody under the bidding idea that, yep, somebody suggested. From point A, from the north side of the building to the south side of the building, everything's done. But my question is, have we looked at, is there potential or an option to retrofit? To get the right ducts size and is, is a possibility? To, like I said, I'm not saying rebuild the motor, but remove that old. Big honking fan that's going on the north side, blowing all the way across the entire building. Replace it with a new motor. Replace the, the solenoids or the pneumatics with the electronics. Build the new computer. I, I'm, I'm. Hundred percent on board for getting this project done. I wanted to go forward with this a long time ago. But I am not going to bypass the citizens that have bonus up here and make a huge twenty million dollar decision for them. That's why I want these ideas and to exhaust all evidence before I say, yeah, let's go.
I can tell you what we did when we were hired to do the facility studies that I think everybody on board is seeing at this point.
Yeah, sure, sure. We consulted with Design Tree Engineering, who has also served the district very well in conjunction with other architectural teams that worked on the two thousand sixteen. Bradbury Stan didn't necessarily go through the building. We're not, we're not engineers, right? That's not, that's not what we're, that's not what we're gonna. Uh, we went through with their engineers who has done all the work for the St. Cloud School District, St. Cloud School District Trust. Design tree engineering just launched, I would say, start told us, and they looked at all that, I would tell you. And their consensus was, it just all needs to go. I, I can't speak to the engineering behind it. I can tell you that units from nineteen sixty-nine won't be compatible with technology of twenty twenty-three. The goal ultimately is to have everything on the district's platform all running cohesively on the same. Control system and all those things, so that Jesse's job is ultimately easier. Um, we just met with Jesse a couple of months ago. To go through things from the high school, learn some things, got a U L back in here to help Jesse under, you know, work through control things. I mean. Buildings are living, breathing animals, right? And, and new high school has been built for three years, needed a little bit of a tune up. All the players were back sitting at the table three months ago, helping the district do that tune up. I, I, all those same players are the ones that helped with that facility study to come up with this decision for the district. I, I don't, you're not, I don't think you're gonna find a difference.
I guess I kind of, I don't really like how you said to make Jesse's job easier. I feel like it's not, I mean, I would love to do that. Like, like when they were taking the video, and I'm assuming you had all watched it, like, there was a problem. Like, to limit some of those and just, like, to make it so that he can just do his job and continue to do it well, without having to worry about. Are the dampers open or is this chism's room have heat or does this barad have. You know, airflow in her room, like, to be able to make all those things work efficiently, so.
Yeah, and then right at the end of the video, the compressor go off. So I, no, I, I, like I said, I know this is a need. I want, I wanna make Jesse's life easier because he is doing a bang up job. I can't believe when I walked through that. Catacomb upstairs, holy cow, that was a mess. And I'm, I'm not an HVAC guy, but I know construction. And I'll tell you what, seeing what he had to do with pneumatic air system and try to diagnose. Where air leak is in hundreds, if not thousands of feet. Of figuring out where that air leak is. I know it's, it's mind boggling that it's even running. Uh, that's not the issue. It's, again, have we researched every possibility? That's all I'm saying. I'm all for it.
Yeah, yes, I guess that's my question. And again, the first time we heard about this was June twenty-sixth. Four months ago, this is a, this is a problem where it's like, well, we gotta get this done by October, because otherwise we're in this like design basement though. We just heard about it for the first time four months ago, and we've had the rediscussions on it. I don't think we're being unreasonable and saying. Can we take a little bit of time here? We, we, I, I don't know how that. How that seems crazy. That we would be saying after four months of rediscussions that. We're now supposed to make this twenty million dollar decision, and I'm saying, I think we need some additional time, and that seems.
Nobody's calling anybody.
Stalling intentionally or something like that. I, I, you literally, this is a giant decision that got dropped and I left four months ago, so I.
So. I think on that specific question, there's two things we gotta look at. First, what is the cost of taking the time? Cause we know there's a cost. Cause we know if we don't. We don't vote to approve by the drop dead date of November, for a year out, costs go up. A few years last, the River View is gonna be under the new system, but there's cost involved. It's not just monetary. One year less that our students are in a better environment.
Another year there, so they're in.
Right, yeah.
Like, can we define four? Because. Right, but has anyone come in there and said that the, the air that the kids are breathing is causing them damage? Now, I'm asking. Okay, so we can't, like, we have to be very careful when we're talking about.
What it will be after the project is completed, type of.
Correct, but I also just wanna make sure that when we're speaking about it, that we are making, like, we are aware that by saying. The air quality is bad or poor. Isn't necessarily being responsible with words either. Like, I don't wanna be speaking outside of mine. Well, if it doesn't meet state standards, do we have somebody from the state who has said that it doesn't meet state standards?
That's correct. I believe that is correct.
So then my question is, if it doesn't meet state standards and the air quality doesn't meet state standards, then why is this not? An emergent thing?
No, the safe, the, the air quality is fine. Okay, so it's not like people breathing poison air. Right? And so, um, but it doesn't mean.
I think it doesn't meet the current codes of fresh air turnover.
Right.
It doesn't, it doesn't meet the current fresh air turnover.
And I would have to imagine we've got. The giant chunk of building, school building in the state of Minnesota that probably don't just base that agent. Systems that are original to the buildings and whatever.
And, and that's a lot of the reason why St. Cloud has been doing what they've been doing, just for that exact reason. And agent units and those types of things. It's the exact same concerns in that district as well.
I guess my thing is, I wanna be careful on what we say, cause I don't want parents to all of a sudden think that now their kids are in this. Environment that is not safe. And that's, I think we'd have a very different conversation if.
Agreed.
That's my only thing.
And that's, and that's why I wanna be clear.
It's a code compliance.
Yeah, we mean state standards as far as the quality of air, but there is a range, right? And so we're still within that range, but it's a code compliance thing. And fundamentally, look, I've got no skin in this game. I'm your interim guy, right? You guys can put this off as long as you want, right? Do whatever. But it is clearly a pay me now or pay me more later scenario. It must get done. This is a need, not a nice to have. And whether or not it costs twenty million dollars or seventeen million dollars or twenty-five million dollars. It's needs to get done. And it's been identified for eight years. It's been eight years that the facility, national facilities have done two thousand fifteen. Um, it wasn't added because the, the district had a surveyor say your magic number is. Hundred and five million, you go over that, it's not your bond, and that's not uncommon. That happens all over the place. And so it got put into phase two, and it keeps growing. It's about, I think at that time it was like fourteen million dollars. And it just keeps growing, and it will continue to keep growing in the cost. Um, I have no idea what's going to happen as far as interest rates and the cost of money. But we've all seen the cost of money go up significantly in the last two years as well. And again. Um, our, our consultants bear to say, boy, it'd be nice if we could get out to the, to that, um. Sale of bonds prior to the Fed raising their interest rates again, right? And so, uh, again. I'm not a financial markets person. I don't know. So I'm dependent on the district's consultants who do work in those areas. And when they say things like that. That, that sounds subject to me. When, when, um, you know, when, um. Whoever was the, who, uh. You know, who was it that we asked about, what's our drop date? October's ideal for these reasons and November's drop date.
Yeah, that's Dan, uh, designer.
Designed, yeah, from Design Tree. And so, so again. Given the process that has to occur for work to start in the summer of twenty-five. That's what we're hearing from people who do this day in, day out. Okay, and again, it's, to me, it's like, it, you know, again, those get off my nose, right? But I'm coming in from the outside, having been through this both in my district in Bloomington and in my district of Osika, and this is a no brainer to me. It, it just, it is an absolute need and not less. And it's not what the tax implication is not going to get better if we wait longer. It, the, and, and the, and the reality is, is that it's just. It's old. Jesse says that when he has a parking lot, we can't find an off the shelf. Substitute for it anymore. It has to be made specifically for that. Um, unit because no one carries off the shelf nineteen sixty-nine products in. So, so it costs us more to replace even the stuff that we have.
I think we've established. Definitely that there's a, some sort of cost in waiting, whether waiting for the idea or not, there is some sort of cost associated with that. So then. Trying to be a little more methodical about this discussion. The other question related to that, what, if we were to. Not pass this in October, not pass this in November, and wait, what is the list of things that we would want to accomplish? In the near future, before everybody's comfortable with the vote.
Well, I dropped out twenty-five flyers at a local coffee shop. So. Honestly, I would like to see all six of us lace up our tennis shoes and go knock doors in our community and have conversations. With our community members and help get the word out. And if it's a no brainer. If it's a no brainer, then why wouldn't we just take it to the voters and have them pass it? If it's a no brainer.
Again, the earliest you could get there would be the spring, and so now you're now looking at the summer of twenty-six to start. Summer of twenty-seven to finish.
But he didn't say that. Andy and also told us that we need to make sure that we take our time and all of us are comfortable with the decision. He did say that.
Not to put words in Tom's mouth, but I think no brainer from the stand, I know that has to be done.
I don't think any one of us have did agree. I think.
You just questioned this no brainer comment. It was, it's a no brainer because it has to be done.
Then wouldn't the community also agree that it's a no brainer affecting?
But if they don't, then what happens? We were elected to make these types of decisions. That's why we were elected. That's why we're sitting here. We have to make this decision.
Well, not really. LTFM bond isn't what historically school board members have been elected to do. That's a new, that's a new process. A twenty million dollar cost would typically have to be a referendum. But we have been elected to handle it probably in the same way that has historically has been handled. We've been granted this additional power, but it is new. That isn't what we were allowed to do necessarily.
A different way to say it, though, is that.
All of us have had the power since we were elected to do this.
Everyone except Jason. Jason, you've been on the board. True, you were reelected when Tricia and I came on the board. So since everybody's most recent election. The state of Minnesota has granted the authority to school boards to do what we're talking about. But I don't think you can say whether it's a historical. Norm or not, that we don't have the authority or we shouldn't exercise the authority if it's the right thing for our business.
No, but that email that came in. Late morning, early afternoon. Also is from somebody who had knowledge of this and. Suggested that it go to the community as well.
The way I read that email is that she wants the stadium to also pass, and the best luck the stadium has to pass is if you. Hook it with this.
So I don't think that that. So I don't think that that was, I didn't take it that way. I did take it, though, that. Where is the conversation with the stadium? I'm not advocating for it one way or another. But that was, if, if we're gonna talk about phase two, let's talk about phase two, and there's two projects in phase two. So what are we gonna do with it? We're back where we assumed so many times that email that I think the point of it was that. It's not, it's a backdoor.
I take huge issue with the. With the comment that doing something that the state has specifically authorized school boards to do is a backdoor approach. It's one of. Two paths we can take. It is hardly a backdoor.
That would be like saying that anyone the state has asked to say, baby, I'm good one, you know, just because it's there doesn't mean it's good or that.
No, it's up to us to determine whether it's good.
Right.
That's the point, but it's not a backdoor approach. We're not. To think of ways to get money that aren't typically allowed. This is what. This is why the law was passed is for these types of projects, and it's used commonly. We've heard that so many times.
Here, here's my argument again, back then. Right now, I'm about to be assessed curb and gutter now. And I had to go to a committee meeting, and I got to that meeting, and they said, well, we're here to hear you. These are elected officials, but they're here to hear our complaints. I had, it was standing room. If I had almost every neighbor down my entire block there opposing this and going. Why the heck are you assessing this curb? We don't need it. And we had this argument with them, and they basically said to us, we hear you, but we've already made the decision. And now you just really ticked off the entire neighborhood, if certain people that not only are gonna get assessed. For curb and gutter now, another twelve million dollar project. Now we got this river view. I wish I had a, a voice in that project, but I didn't. And that ticks off people that are tact pairs here that are already hurting day by day. Every day we see the gas prices go up. They assess my house at almost. Double the value practically. It's insane what they are. So there's so many issues right now that us making now a twenty million dollar. Uh, decision for the people. I, I just think the people need to be able to make that decision. How will we spend their money? If they all vote for it and they wanna go for it, then I will be all in and say, okay. Now that the people who voted us in have spoken. Okay, I'll, I'll pay my extra month then. But I'm, eh, the taxes right now are getting so ridiculous, but. Some people paycheck to paycheck and can barely make the, the property tax.
So, so to be clear, your preference is. The vote no on using long term LTFM bonding. I would, I would, I would instead send it to a referendum to the public. I would definitely send it to the public. Okay, then we're back to the same question that really hasn't been answered of what happens when they say no? If that happens, we don't know if it'll happen.
Well, the people that have asked it are Jason and Matt. So what does happen if, if they say no? What do you guys think? What are your ideas in that instance?
Then we're back to discussing now with further community input of. Don't spend our money like that. Now we have to do the even harder job of saying, yeah, but now we're even more down the road, three years down the road into a need. We identified it as a need when things were cheaper three years ago, but when said we went to ask the public. You said no, now we have to do it anyway. We. I don't see how that is a win situation in any way.
But what if we take the opportunity and take some time? And go out in our community and. Go out as if we are going out for a referendum. And put the work in and have the conversations and say, hey, this is what's going to happen. If we don't pass this, then. This might be where we end up having to go at some point. Because. I am willing to go do the work. Are, are the rest of you willing to go do the work? Are you willing? Eh, I'm not trying to say that you're not doing work. I don't want it to be taken that way, but I am willing to go out in our community. With our flyers and say, hey, this is what's going on. This is the, the need that is at the board table. And these are our two avenues. Because the feedback that I've heard is you better not raise my taxes without my voice. And that's really hard to. And I've heard, I've heard other things. I'd say that's. I don't know if I call it prevailing. I, I actually have any, I wouldn't call that prevailing. I've just had a lot of questions and a lot of, some of them are very bad. And I, unfortunately, it was more embarrassing for me to not have some of the answers on some of them, not, not the technical stuff, but. There's, yeah, I mean, there's just a lot of questions.
And the people I've talked to, I have to say straight up, they're in favor. They would vote for it. They'd vote for it right now if it was.
Happy to, then why wouldn't you feel okay, you know, and vote, I guess is what I guess.
Because it's their decision to make.
Right, but if they're all telling you that they're for it, then why would that be like?
Not all of them are for it, but there are people that I talk to out there that are saying that, yep. It's a good idea. Just do what we need to do to get that building up and running for the kitchen, you know? I hundred percent agree. Again, I went through that building with Jesse and. And it's a mess. I totally agree. But again. Let's, let's let the people decide. The first time that we went for the school referendum and it got shot down. You know, then all of a sudden we went right back at it. We got past the second round. On a non-voting year, so I mean. Not saying we do something like that, but. Let the people speak.
So if the people speak and say, no, that's what I want, then what's, what's next then?
Well, when, when, when it failed, but what did you have to do differently or what else had to be done? When the first referendum failed?
We have to go back out and do it again.
Okay, but what? To get it to pass, was there anything different that was done to help?
We did not, or not, I'm, I'll be, I'm, I don't know if people are, I'm not going door to door.
That's fine, okay.
I'm just not, that's not the way I think that this process has to happen.
I think there's more efficient ways of using that.
And it still comes back. If you go door to door and ask every person, and every person says, no, don't do it, what did we get out of that?
It's not about going, so when. When you go door knocking, it's not necessarily to go pull somebody.
But what I'm saying is if all those people are negative. And they're like that, I, you can give me all the information you want. I don't want you to raise my.
And yes, you know what else? Somebody who might not agree with you, you go to their door, you knock on their door and have a conversation with them. They may even say, I don't agree with what you're doing. But they still have respect when you have to go and do something, because you at least had a conversation with them. So it is also building relationships and trust within our community. And I don't want to rehash the past, but we have lost trust in our community. So how do we build that?
With some people.
Be careful that that's not, that's not everybody.
He doesn't trust this board, that's not true.
That, you're right. I am saying that.
All the time.
Well, I apologize. And what I was going to say is, yes, there has been some loss. On, from everywhere. It's not just. The entire community. So yes, we're correct on that, Jason, and I apologize if I upset you by saying that, but it was also just to build relationships in the community too. And I don't see what's wrong with that.
Nothing, I'm just telling.
We haven't necessarily, I think I wanna set a precedent that we need to go door knocking on an item that is a need and not a want. I could totally get behind you. Saying that we can do it now, when we, when it comes time to do a stadium, like, because that is something that we want. But I don't necessarily think that I wanna set a precedent on something that isn't, I mean. If my furnace breaks out, I'm gonna replace the furnace. Like, I, I'm not saying that River View is broken down, but I mean, it's coming to an end alike, and we're gonna have to replace it. Whether we want to or not, it is a need, and I don't wanna set a precedent that we have to do that every time we need something in our district. I. I think that would be, to me, that's more of something that we should do when it's a. And maybe that's, maybe I'm wrong, but that's kind of where I'm at.
There's another never do go along with it. Okay, right now, you're saying broken furnace. Right now, we have a junker car. That my little kid can drive around until it does blow up, and then we'll figure.
But that only affects your son, right?
Well, I'm talking, okay, you're, you're using a analogy of a plumbing or your, your thing. So I'm telling you, if. If I have to live within my certain. Means, okay, and I have to buckle up and take overtime shifts just to pay for someone's taxes. Okay, there's a lot of people in that position. So again, I have a hundred percent support. Doing the project. I really do. I, 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 but I am not going to make a twenty million dollar decision on that. That is gonna be, you know, right now, talking to Jesse, he said the boilers are. Kicking hard and doing a good job, and then, you know, yep, he has his problems. But he says it's not on the verge of.
My issue is. We're gonna have, we're gonna have an increase in price.
Yep.
Okay.
We've heard this conversation.
I get, okay, so an increase in price. And you're just tacking the, it's just further down, we're just kicking the can further down the road. And as much as. I agree with you, I guess that, and we're at a catastrophic event. I don't wanna keep kicking that can on the road. I don't want that price to increase. I, my, my family lives on a single income. I, we are not rolling in the money in the mealhouse, like, in any way, shape or form. I mean, I, it, it's, sometimes it is month to month, like. I get it. But I also don't want it to see it increase to twenty two million. I don't want it to, I don't wanna wait and see it increase to twenty four. Like, I don't wanna see that, that tax hike in potential and have. You know, I, I, that's, I'm scared of that. I don't, I would rather keep it at that price tag of twenty million. And not see it go up, because if it goes up, that's gonna, I mean, that's gonna impact my family even more so. But it could go up, just so you know, well, my estimate, so it could be more than twenty million. But it's for sure gonna be up in the following years. I mean, that's, that's a given.
What the bids end up coming in at. One year versus subsequent years is likely going to be lower than earlier days. I think no matter what the dollars end up being, yeah. This coming year, it could be seventeen, it could be twenty three, somewhere in a range. But I think one of the things we're kind of losing sight of is we've talked almost exclusively about taxpayer interest here. We also have an obligation to our student body, our students. That's kind of our primary. Focus as a board. So, you know, we talked about all these financial costs, and I've mentioned it a little bit. We have costs to the district of. I'm not gonna say the word for, of a lesser learning environment than it could be. On a project that we know needs to be done eventually. And so the longer we wait. The less benefit our student body gets. And I've been thinking to myself. As I've listened to this conversation, how we can best, because there are no good options. Somebody said there's no good choices here. There's, there are, yeah, there are no wins here. There are just less bad choices. But we have to balance taxpayer consideration with student body need. And one of the things I've been thinking about, not just tonight, but over the last few weeks is. Yes, we want to educate the public. I think that's a given. Does that need to happen before we take a vote? Because this project, remember, won't start for a year and a half. Say we vote next month. It starts a year and a half after that. There will be many people in this community. That won't really know that something's going on until they either see an impact on their property tax statement. Or they see the construction vehicles in front of River View in two thousand twenty five. And then they start asking questions. Well. We've got a bit of time before those two things happen, where we could continue to educate. It doesn't have to stop when we take our vote. So. I don't even know the right answer to that question, but that's something that's really been on my mind a lot is, do we need to push out our votes? For this public education campaign? Or can the vote stay in the same place and the public education just spill past that? Because, and I wouldn't say that if it wasn't a project that needed to be done. If this was stadium project, I'd have a stadium project, I'd have the exact opposite viewpoint. Where you need to do all the work upfront before taking a vote. So.
So here, so here's a question. We, let's say we say, okay, yeah, we're gonna vote, the vote passes. And then it goes to bids, and then it has to come back to us to vote and pass it again, correct?
We have to approve bids when they come in, correct?
So is this vote only to go to get? A bid? Or is this vote to say, yep, no matter what the bid is, we're going to move forward with this project?
It is not the latter. I don't know the mechanics, Jay. Maybe, Joe, you could explain exactly what we're gonna do.
The initial vote we would do would be the parameter. It's essentially. Essentially, it's approving going forward with financing the project. So, uh, it sets the parameters of, of, of a bonding resolution. That would say, um, you pick an amount to nineteen point six million, and what you have for the best information right now. Uh, for best cost estimate, and say we are intending to issue bonds for. The, under the indoor air quality regulations, you know, pending approval of the Department of Ed. And resubmitting our LTFM plan to, to M D. Um, and we think it's gonna cost nineteen point six million dollars, and we're gonna issue bonds. In those amounts to finance it. Uh, sometime in the next. Concurrently with the design phase of going to the contractors, you would actually issue those bonds. And get the money in sometime in, let's say, January, that we're following the timeframe timely order. Um, we then. Use those bonds to pay engineering fees. We would earn interest on that money while it's invested before we make major payments to contractors. And then we would bid the project out. And if it comes in at. Um, basically. Basically, that's a commitment to do the project. And we will look at where we at then, uh, from a total cost perspective. If it's significantly less after the bids are let out. You know, obviously, there's typically some, some things that change throughout the scope of the project, change where it's happened, right? Uh, there's always continued to in there. Uh, wherever we end up at the end, if there's money left over, that goes directly to debt service to. Reduce the, um, the principal interest that has to be levied for. Um, to basically, that, that has to go to the debt service bond because we're bonding for a specific use project. It's not like when you bond to build a new school, where you basically say we're bonding for the betterment of. District facilities, and there's a wide range of uses for those. This is limited to the purpose and scope that we would apply to M D for, first of all. So they can only be used for that. If the costs come in astronomically higher than anticipated and more than we would have for that bonding. We would have to look at whether we are going to, A, value engineer the project to get the scope. Within, uh, you know, change the number of units, those units that are used, whatever that may be. B, explore other funding options, some of the grants that might be available, some solar or some. Excel rebates or things like that to offset the cost. Um, C, use some of our LTFM fund balance that we have currently to try to offset those without going out for more bonding. Um, so basically, we have to evaluate where we're at. But basically, uh. There's two steps to financing them. Issuing a parameter resolution would tell there to go out and. Apply for this, uh, get the, get the documentation to M D to get these approved and. Seek to sell the bonds at this level, right? Before those are actually issued, then the board has to act again to approve the sale of those bonds. That would happen at a later meeting where, uh, the bonds are actually approved. You know the exact stated terms, exactly what it's gonna cost to pay those off. And what the principal interest schedule is on those. Um, so those two processes have to happen before the bonds are officially sold. And then board has to approve also on the construction side, the call for bids, and then approving awarding the contracts for those. So it's the first step, but it's really, um, committing to all the parties involved of the project that's gonna take place. Hopefully, that ends.
Yeah, that's good.
I did just send you all an email with some thoughts that I've had and I've been reporting. And it said, um, you know, at some point in October, probably in October. The board will need to vote whether or not to use the tool they have been given, the LTFM health and safety bonding option. Um, and down the way, I said, uh, the longer the board waits, more expensive the project becomes. Here's one question each board member will need to consider. Is my primary responsibility to the taxpayer or to the students? Well, the obvious answer to this is the both. We have obligations to both the taxpayer and the students, right? Um, the board code of ethic is clear that the primary responsibility is towards students, as it states in Article Two. Section A, Item Seven, be primarily motivated by a desire to provide the best possible education for students of my school district. I just think it's very important that the board remembers that that is part of the board code of ethics.
Can I re-ask a question? I didn't, we didn't really follow up on this, but what? More would we wanna do moving forward with public education? Or it was word importantly, with educating the public. Let's not go off on that tangent.
I just feel like you really wanna know. I mean, I'm getting to that point where you really wanna know. Because everything that I say is like, well, but. Do you really wanna know what I think we are doing or?
I I would like to know, I, where I'm undecided is. Are there certain things to do to educate the public need to happen before the vote or not? So, that's where I'm pretty much decided in my own mind that most of it could happen after the vote. So we can take advantage of the economic conditions now before they worsen. But. I do want to get a list together of exactly what we should do, what we think as a group. Think needs to be done before a vote.
Jason, I have a question for you. And I, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but the price that was in that email, did you see that email? From earlier? So is the price in that email correct? Cause I thought it said seventeen million in two thousand five, or not, I'm sorry, two thousand fifteen.
It did say that.
So is that incorrect? Is that price taken correct? The only reason why I'm asking is because we talk about price increase. But if it was seventeen million in twenty fifteen and now it's twenty million in twenty three.
I, I don't know off the top of my head, I'm gonna have to go back and. In my recollection from looking at it. It was fourteen originally in two thousand fifteen, it grew to fifteen, it grew to nineteen by two thousand twenty one. That's, that was my recollection.
Actually, I think it's probably on our website. Let me look, let me look.
Fourteen seven in two thousand fifteen, it was sixteen in two thousand twenty one, so in six years, it went up about a million and a half. Based on the Brever Stan breakdown from two thousand, March of two thousand sixteen report shows the cost of fourteen point seven nine. And the Brever Stan report from twenty twenty one shows the cost of just about six. We're in a historically, well, historically, we are in extra bad. Uh, economy currently, which would explain the big jump in twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three in two years, but that's not a. That increase has not been historically normal for what we've been seeing for the price of that mess. That's an extreme.
We saw thirty percent in construction.
Yeah. Yeah, the market is, well, the economy has put a lot of uncertainty into the market, so, you know, I work in that field and that's caused a. Huge decrease in new projects starting. Material cost is still inflated, but.
Session.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, oh, to answer your question, uh, yes, door knocking flyers, um, we talked about having a listening second. I do think that we've been awful, and the multiple estimates, you know, or or at least have an explanation of what other estimates were. Some sort of. Information on that. With I C S or whoever it was.
Okay. Just to clarify, I think what you're asking is that there'd be different, see if there were any different scopes of work. Suggested. Uh, because. And that's really an impact that's if it's talking about the same scope of work, people are gonna estimate anything, but we don't know what the input actually come in at. So are you talking? To know whether. Different scopes of work that may cost a different amount have been looked at or considered?
I, I do know.
Okay, well, that's where.
Do we know?
That's where it gets back to the question of. Is there even any other possibility with the code the way it is? Because. Most of the stuff getting torn out of ceilings and stuff work that we know is undersized under current codes, it's not, I.
It's grandfathered in because it's there.
Yeah, so once we do a significant project on it, you gotta bring it up to code and that's where all the terror comes in. So I don't know that there'd be anything that would be.
We don't know.
Big difference.
I guess that kind of thing is we don't know.
Well, and when I say we don't know, it's that I don't think it's been proposed to us because it's not, not, but.
Nice.
So.
Again.
Back to listening session, do we want to put one on? And not all the board would be there, I wouldn't want to form there.
Like it would.
Should we put one on between now and October's meeting? I mean.
Does it matter? Or why, why did you say that you don't want to form there?
Guess we're good, it's just harder to schedule.
Well, I mean, if you.
Realistically, getting three of us there is a lot easier than getting all six of us there. We've had those issues before.
I was just wondering about you.
Yeah. I, and frankly, the people that are there that are more important to answer the questions would be district admin staff. Not necessarily the board members, the board members would be there more just to observe and listen to the feedback. And I think. A group of three could relay feedback to the full group, this is easily. But. Um. I'd be open to that for sure, and doing that before October, because it's fresh in people's minds now. We just did the media blitz, we're gonna have a podcast coming out.
Okay, let's figure it out and set it up.
Sure, so we'll, we'll schedule that. Um. We don't have to do that now, but we'll get that on the hook since after five o'clock or five thirty, I'll make it. Is there anything else? That we would need to do as far as educating the public on this?
I think if if we're seeing a trend of. Questions concerned or something that we need to address that we would address those in the moment, however we handle that one, I. This can be a rough estimate of what we're gonna do is probably not everything wants to get into it.
Yeah.
Um.
I think directing up with the Q and A, because you said that you're gonna put all those questions up on the district site will be really helpful as well.
Yeah, have people email us with your, with their questions and I can, if if you email them to me, I can forward to the appropriate people. Sometimes we might have to go to very, very standard, sometimes we might have to go to Design Street.
Okay. I, I think the last thing I would say is, I do understand that. There's not a full comfort level here. With at least certain board members voting on this at this moment in time. However, I'm faced with a difficult choice of whether to put this on for vote in October. I don't want to say that publicly because. If I don't, we could be missing an opportunity to. Have costs be lower on this project that we've all identified as a need. So if I'm putting it on for vote in October. It's because it just needs to get done. We need to speak one way or another as a board. At that moment in time before we miss an opportunity for getting it started in a certain year and getting it done at a certain cost.
Well, our meeting's October from here.
How do you set, uh, set up a special vote on a non-election year?
We can't do it in Houston.
You can do it, but there are certain dates that are designated that you're allowed to do it in. And I can't remember what they all are, but I know that there's one like in. Spring, like April or May, there's another one in the summer, um.
That is an additional cost of that election. Just so you know, yeah, and we get that information, so we at least know what we're looking at as far as.
Versus just waiting for November, I can give you, I I can find out pretty quickly.
But as far as what you're saying, Matt, is you're gonna put it on the agenda?
I haven't decided, but I wanted it to be very clear that that's a possibility and I'll have to make that decision, so, um.
Yes, yeah, I just feel like.
Knowing. Yeah, I don't know, I I can't predict how the vote's gonna go, but if. Now, a number of board members that seem like they're ready to vote yes on this, so I need to call it for vote to see where we're at. Because on the, the chance that it would pass, I think it's beneficial financially to the school district.
Well, I put it on the agenda in October for vote.
Yeah.
And then you don't have to make the executive decision, so.
Okay. Fair enough.
In terms of scheduling, let's see, so I know we can do it later, but I mean, the most important people to be here, like. I want to make sure that they're the ones that are here first. Like, I mean, I'd love to be here, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll make sure those who can answer questions best are there, so, and by that, I mean those from the district.
Can we just have, is it something that they can say this is the date that worked for them and whichever board members are able to be there can be there? And as long as we put it in a public meeting, then any number of us can show up?
Sure, yep, and we'll make sure we get at least three of them, because I actually wanted to be one of the board members, but yeah, it'd be fine. Um. Somebody, I know it's late, but somebody had raised the issue of the stadium and whether that goes. At the same time as this or what? Is that something we even want to discuss tonight or? Just how the stadium plays into all this. I think we've exhausted our discussion for.
Yeah.
So is there anything else? Before we move on? All right. Then.
And one thing we have to do is we have to do a vote on a combined polling place in September. Otherwise, yet, otherwise, if you do go for a vote at any time, you should do this every year anyway. That otherwise, you have to go to every single polling place. And if you're only running a school district election. It gets very expensive and very difficult to staff every polling place. And I, I think when I talked about it, because I don't think we had that on this year. So, so we'd be hard pressed to run any kind of election this year. Um. I'm, I'm getting close to finding where the information is.
I'm checking it now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ah, yeah. Second Tuesday in February, second Tuesday in April, second Tuesday in May, second Tuesday in August, first Tuesday after the first Monday in November. Thank you. Okay.
Around that item of discussion, um, with what? We had talked about moving or adding a discussion item about, uh, what Jen mentioned with your M S B A earlier, remind me what they called it?
It was just if we wanted to submit a resolution to on some of the legislation that was passed. One of the examples that was that I can remember in this very moment was just how the S R O. Were being. Affected, so want to thank you for, um. You know, resolution would be to take that piece of legislation. Uh.
Okay.
Is an example. There were some other ones too, but.
And and not to cut you off, but.
No.
Since it's so late, I'm gonna ask for a motion to go on the agenda, just to make sure we have a majority that wants to do this.
It, I, it doesn't even, I just was throwing it out there. If we don't want to, that's fine. It doesn't matter. It was just something that was brought up in the M S B A. Thing last week, so.
I don't know, unless anybody has a strong opinion on it, it's so late now, it's still a closed session. I'm just saying. In the interest of time, I almost think we don't need to do that.
And that's fine, I.
Actually, I'm kind of interested in the S R O part, I guess, personally, um, and it doesn't have to be. Like, I mean, I'm gonna be open to meet with Jen and maybe like, you know, you. Something if we do to think of find something that we.
It's hard because anything we put out has to be approved, I assume by the board, I mean, we have a majority support, right? So I have a form right now, and this is what the form reads, full name, position title, phone number, email address. Is it, what's the name of the school district and the district number? Is this being submitted by an individual board member? So. Maybe the board members can submit things.
Okay.
Uh, is this being pending, uh, pending the support of the school board or with the support of the school board? Those are the three boxes to check. Then it says be resolved, um, you know, and so you kind of, uh, please, um. M S B A urges legislature to, and then you just kind of describe the problem, explain why this is a problem, provide supporting documentation. Uh, and then you just submit. How about, if you're offering to do that, you can check one of the first two boxes, either say pending board approval or by individual. I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
That'd be great, thank you.
And the S R O thing is going to be changing here in Sarcal, so. You're gonna have a meeting with Brandon coming up, I believe, on Wednesday. Um, Minnesota Post Board put out a new document that basically said. Police should not have contracts with school districts. Right, because then they are agents of the school district and so, um, so we'll be meeting about that coming up.
Okay.
Good, um. Then last discussion items are future board work sessions. Uh, we are right here Thursday, September twenty eighth, seven P M. Um. For future board meetings, this is our October regular meeting. Um, we are not the third Monday in October, it is the fourth Monday in October. October twenty third, St. Stephen's City Hall, that is confirmed, six thirty P M. Uh, and then another work session Wednesday, November first, again, right here, five thirty P M for that one. And.
Very appalling results, and maybe this is more of a read, sorry, are there any polling results for when we're gonna try and do that M S B A being part?
Oh, thank you for the reminder.
I love, and if you just wanna, I mean, I was curious, because I know we have asked, yeah. I'll tell you that.
I remember, right, Barbara's getting back from vacation very shortly, so it's good timing if we get back here with a date. That's exactly where I was, yeah, five forty, so, yeah, five minute recess. Right, I am calling our regular meeting back to order from recess. And I'm gonna ask for a motion to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen, D S and dog. Point zero three for discussion of labor negotiations strategy.
So, second.
Question by Jen, second by Tricia, gotta be quick on that one. If it passes unanimously, we are now officially in closed session. And we have a reporting.
Red light means on.
Doesn't mean stopping.
I'm just saying.